Okay, I think we can probably get started. Ms. Mulberg, the food was just so good tonight. All right, thank you, and I believe Dr. Braybrand is going to lead us through this activity tonight.
Thank you all. I hope you had a happy Thanksgiving, and I'm thrilled that you got time with family and friends. And now, post-Thanksgiving, we're back together as a family. It's been just a week, but I'm very excited about tonight. You know, one of the things that I have shared with you that is a goal this year is to help prioritize the strategic plan at Ignite, and we talked about it when I interviewed, and we've been talking about it this fall. So, I want to have Marty and Leedy take you through two documents. One is a document that really shows the work of your prioritization. Remember, it was almost a month ago when you sat in here and prioritized desired outcomes, and crosswalked that work with the prioritization that leadership team did. So, that'll be one document. And then, the next document will be really taking that work and reprioritizing our strategic plan down to less than 10 things to really focus on, and to develop those performance measures and performance targets, those indicators of success, and then where we need to go to, I think, increase accountability for both myself and the whole school system. And really, I hope that you'll see improves the governance structure, and maybe even clarity on where we're trying to take the system so that people, the sense of feeling overwhelmed goes away, and people have a clear understanding of where we're trying to take the work. I want to reemphasize, this is no new stuff under Ignite. This is taking all the work you all have done as a board with Ignite, and just reprioritizing it so that we can have a focus for the division over the next 18 to 24 months. And I see this as a living document. We can continue to tweak it. But I think as we develop these measures and then report out, we'll be able to do this on a more regular basis. We do the goals right now, and they sort of come at different points in the year, and I think this is going to be a way to bring all of these measures together at once, and have you give us feedback on how we're doing, how I'm doing as a superintendent, and how we're doing as a system. So, without further ado, to let you go ahead and get into it, and tonight, I hope what my outcome is from tonight is that you get questions answered about both the process you went through and we did, the document that you have in front of you, and getting support for moving forward to have this prioritized strategic plan lead us forward as we start to focus on key drivers in the school system around really allocating our resources toward these drivers, and then bringing you back a baseline of where we're actually standing right now with these indicators, and creating some performance targets by which you can measure myself and the system over the next year or two. All right, Marty?
Great. Good evening, everyone. We have a bit of a turkey hangover, but we're all here, and we're all ready to go. So, Dr. Braybrand is exactly right. Tonight, we're looking for guidance from you as a board. We're looking for guidance because we've done a lot of work together. You've done work, we've done work. We're going to show you how that prioritization fell out, and then we'll be looking for some guidance as to whether or not these are the points that we should be focused on as a system. And then, secondly, we did take some license with the first document. We know that we haven't had the discussion about whether or not these are the points that we should be focused on. But in order for us to create the second document, which talks about some of those metrics, we did have to take some license and say that, well, let's just think that these might be the points that we're going to focus on so that we can create a document to get feedback from the board about the reporting structure, about the process, and about the kinds of information that they would need so that they can provide support to the system. So, with that, that's where we are tonight. So, I don't want you to feel like we got ahead of ourselves by creating the second document without getting feedback. We knew that we had to do a lot this evening, and so we wanted to make sure that we were proactive in some of that work. And as Dr. Braybrand said, that these are all, you know, living documents, very fluid, and we can make changes where we need to. The first document, and I do want to take a moment, I've had even our own staff have said that, well, which document are we focused on because they look exactly the same? And so, we're looking first at the report on preliminary desired outcome prioritization. But I want to give you an opportunity to see how you can sort of differentiate these documents. On the inside, on the second page of each document, there's a bit of a grid that shows the process. And the part of the process that we're currently in will always be bolded on this particular page so that you can see where we are within the process. And so, for this, that we would be identifying those, I don't think that this is the right document. You know, we have the wrong document up. Let's go to the first document. There we go. So, for this, we're going to prioritize those strategic objectives. That's how you'll know where we are within the process. When we get into the second document, we'll talk about what those metrics might look like. And so, to begin, I'm going to ask Ms. Aruda to walk us through the document, to sort of remind us what we did the last time we were together, the criteria that we used to get to these prioritized desired outcomes, and then hopefully then start a discussion about the work. We do have LT members here available who could answer questions for those specific items that you might have questions about. So, we're going to get started with Ms. Aruda.
Thank you, Marty. Can I get the clicker as we go through this? Okay. So, I am going to move us to the first page with the introduction, and just kind of remind us of what we did the last time. So, the last time we worked together, you went and selected with your dots which of the different kinds of desired outcomes you thought should be prioritized most highly. And this is not around whether or not we value everything in the strategic plan because everything in the strategic plan is important. It was around trying to set the priorities of which ones were the ones that we should focus on most highly. So, in addition to what you had done with the dots, the LT had also been doing some work, as a reminder, mostly with actions, but they had also backtracked to some broader kinds of desired outcomes that combined some of the things that they had been thinking were the highest priority actions. So, what I'm going to be talking about today and introducing to you is how those two things combine, and pointing out the places where both LT and the school board agreed on things, as well as places where the school board and LT had not necessarily large disagreements, but where there wasn't quite as much alignment. So, I'm going to go through that. Now, what you'll see as I go through it is if you remember with your dots, the highest level that you could vote on, which was a vote of five, was for an above-average desired outcome. So, a priority that was above average, you gave a vote of five when you did it. And what we did was we averaged all of your votes, and anything that was a 4.5 or above as an average from the school board, we considered a priority by the school board. And that's what I'm going to be showing you, is where the school board ended up with an average of 4.5 or higher. In addition, I'm going to match it up with what the leadership team had as well, so you'll see both sets together. So, scroll down, and this starts on page two, and you'll see, oh, I'm sorry, page three. I forgot about the preface. So, starting on page three, you'll see that there's this table that goes through the original desired outcome from Ignite, and those were the ones that you were voting on. And the ones that are listed in this table are all ones that you either ended up with a 4.5 or higher, or for one of the goals, none of them reached 4.5, so we took the highest one. That was the resource stewardship goal, and for that one, the highest rating that you had was a 4.33. So, that's the one that's listed here for that goal, so that we were sure to represent all four of the goals in this listing. So, you'll see that you ended up with desired outcome one, about the curriculum will reflect portrait of a graduate outcomes, two, about the achievement gaps, three, around access to high-quality early education programs, and so on. So, these are all the ones that were listed by you as the highest priorities. Now, in addition, as I said, the leadership team had been doing some work. So, you'll see in the right-hand column, the wording that they had been focused around with what they were setting as the priorities.
And if you may, if you remember the document that showed the prioritized strategic plan with the multiple colors, we didn't repost that, but there was some discussion at our last meeting that the language was different on the second document than the document we were using. This is the language from that second document. And so, we're showing the alignment between the language from the second document and the alignment then with the desired outcomes. We have yet one more iteration of language that we'll show you in our second document, but we just wanted to let you know that this is that crosswalk where there are some questions around this new language. We don't know where it necessarily came from. This is how it aligns to the desired outcomes.
So, you'll see, for the first three that I was talking about, LT has sort of combined those under an overall amended outcome statement around ensuring that all students achieve portrait of a graduate outcomes through addressing opportunity, access, and attainment gaps. So, the curriculum for portrait of a graduate, the achievement gaps, and then the high-quality early childcare, I mean, early education would all be fit under that overall LT amended outcome. The second one you'll see is the desired outcome about FCPS will demonstrate cultural competency and sensitivity when supporting families. And here, this has been joined into delivery of high-quality professional development to staff. And so, all of this around cultural competency, while it originally came from the premier workforce goal, would be included under, putting it under delivery of focused high qual-, I'm sorry, while it originally came from the caring culture goal, would be included under the premier workforce goal around delivery of high-quality professional development. Then, moving on to the next outcome, which is outcome 24, this is another one from caring culture that you had prioritized with a score above 4.5, that FCPS students will be encouraged and supported in making healthy life choices. And you'll see that the amended statement from LT was around promoting both student and employee well-being. And I'll come back to that statement a little bit later as we talk about some of the places where there was a little bit of not as much alignment between the school board and leadership team. Then, for desired outcome 27 and 29, these both came off of the premier workforce, and they were ones that you prioritized above 4.5. Desired outcome 27 actually got a perfect rating of five, so everyone gave it that highest above-average rating to recruit, hire, and retain employees, to maintain a premier workforce. And the other one that you prioritized highly was to employees will benefit from competitive compensation packages. And those two, you'll see, for the leadership team, they had included both of those under enhanced competitive employment practices. And then, the final one, which is the one that comes out of resource stewardship, as I said, that one fell a little bit below 4.5, but it was the highest priority that was set by the school board or selected. And this one is around, FCPS will regularly and systematically advocate for fiscal resources at the county, state, and federal levels. And this starts off with develop advocacy program, and you'll see that this is one of the amended outcomes that, as we show you the second document, has been changed a little bit beyond this as well. So, this is the alignment, or these are the places where both school board and the leadership team aligned their priorities and saw them as very well-matched with each other. Now, I'm going to move down to the bottom of this page and talk about three that were not as highly rated by the school board, but were things that the leadership team has included. And again, this is not, when the strategic plan was created, it was created with the idea that everything that was in it was valued by the community, by the school board, by FCPS. But this was in terms of just trying to select which should be the priorities for this year and the next fiscal year. So, in this case, you'll see that under caring culture, FCPS staff will be encouraged and supported in making healthy life choices. This was not rated as highly as a high priority by the school board, but it is included in the amended language, amended outcome C, to promote student and employee well-being. So, the leadership team did include it as part of that amended language. You'll also see under premier workforce, desired outcome 30, around dynamic professional development opportunities will be available for all employees. This was something that was, again, not rated as highly or as higher priority for this coming year, but is included in amended outcome B by the school leadership team. And that would be around the delivery of focused, high-quality professional development. And then, the final one, which you'll see at the top of page four, came from the resource stewardship goal, and this is desired outcome 32, that a budget decision-making framework based on financial management principles and standards will be regularly and systematically utilized. The school board rated this at slightly above average, but not as high as some of the other ones. So, those were the three places where the desired outcomes were things that the leadership team had been focused around prioritizing, but were rated somewhat lower by the school And so, at this point, we really want to open it up as discussion for you to talk about how you see this. The next step of this is really to come to a consensus, so to have the conversation around it, and for the school board and Dr. Braybrand to agree on what that final list really should look like.
Leedy, before you take the questions, can you just share with them the back, the appendix information before, just to might help them with a few of the questions?
Absolutely.
Maybe by answering by looking at the back.
So, if you look at the very back in appendix A, you'll see everything that got rated. And so, it starts off by telling you how you can think about the different ratings, with averages of 4.5 or higher being the highest priority, as we talked about. Then, between 3.5 and 4.49, that average would be slightly above average priority, and then so on, down to average priority and slightly below. And then, we have below-average priority as well, but there was nothing that was rated by the school board as below average. So, if you scroll, scroll down, you'll see that there are tables, and they're organized by the overarching strategies that are in the strategic plan, and each of the desired outcomes under that overarching strategy is listed. They're listed in decreasing priority based on school board's ratings, and the ones that are marked with the gray background are the ones that ended up on that first list that I was talking about earlier. So, those are the ones that ended up with the highest priority. But you can see all the other prioritization for all the other desired outcomes as well. So, if you're interested in one of the ones that didn't end up as the highest priority, you can see how that ended up being rated overall on average by the school board. It starts with the student success ones, and then you'll see it continues on with caring culture, premier workforce, and then finally with resource stewardship. So, all 35 of the desired outcomes are listed in the appendix if you want to take a look at that.
So, questions, discussion?
Yeah, I don't know who's, okay. So, I don't, sorry, I don't know who's calling the shots here. So, I unfortunately was not able to, because of a family commitment, was not able to make the last one where the ranking was done. And then, when I, I had the information, but I felt like absent the conversation with everybody else, and that retreat was not videotaped. So, it wasn't, I couldn't, you know, it was very difficult to make a guess without any context of what my colleagues were talking about in terms of rating it. So, I didn't want to rate it without the context of the conversation. I can tell you, starting at the end, which is at the top of page three, or at the top of page four, and then in combination with what's on the very back of the appendix, my vote probably would have propelled the resource stewardship at the top of page four to the 4.5. I mean, I don't know how the averages work, but, you know, I would have done something like put all my stickers there. So, I'm encouraged that that's, hopefully that we can include that in the amended E outcome. The problem I really have is that the bottom is the very last thing that didn't get ranked that was at a 3.56, which is stakeholders will understand where and how financial resources will be utilized. I guess I'm at a little bit of a loss how everybody did not sort of rank that importantly. These are the people from whom we get our resources, and how you build quote-unquote "an advocacy program." I actually am not sure I completely understand the one that was ranked here, which says, "we will regularly and systematically advocate for fiscal resources at the county, state, and federal levels." That means get more. How do you get more if you don't make sure that those who are giving it to you understand how they're used? So, I'm, this one sort of befuddles me. I would sort of think that if you have a program that's built around fiscal transparency to the very people to whom we're indebted, that they give us the pleasure of serving them, and $2.8 billion of their dollars, this goes hand-in-hand. I don't even understand really the unbuckling of it. And when we've done things like two years in a row, had a superintendent's budget task force where we asked people to commit, you know, frankly, a lot of time and effort into engaging with us on the budget, that's, the whole reason we had to do that in the first place was because we hadn't done this. So, we got ourselves into the, you better have some kind of a citizen budget task force with a superintendent because you didn't do this. So, I guess I'd like to hear a discussion about how you elevate this, because I don't see really how you address the rest of the goals. Like, you know, for example, you know, the, the all qualifying publicly funded future FCPS students will have access to high-quality early education programs. Well, they can be funded, but we don't have the space for them. And we don't have the space for them if we don't have the capital infrastructure. We don't have the capital infrastructure if we don't get the capital dollars. And we don't get the capital dollars from the board of supervisors because, the last bullet on the back of the page. So, I just think it's all inextricably linked, and once you pull this thread out, I think the, what's left, the tapestry that is told, doesn't look complete.
If I could, just for the boards, we keep going, this is going to be helpful. I mean, we're finishing this document, and there'll be pieces from here. There could be tweaks to some of the amended outcomes that end up incorporating. You might be able to incorporate in the advocacy through a clear stakeholder breakdown of where existing resources are. So, you may be able to, if there's things that you want to elevate up higher, right? You went through the exercise, a couple of you weren't here. There's room. This isn't, this isn't the Ten Commandments etched in stone tonight, but it's our best shot at your work and our work. And maybe, it's probably helpful to take a few questions on this, and then I think as you get to the next document to see how we would operationalize it, you may be able to make tweaks to some of the language that'll get you closer to the measurements and outcomes you want to see.
And I guess to help and to clarify Ms. Schultz's question, and again, since you missed that piece of the meeting, it doesn't, I guess this is my question to you, Dr. Braybrand, doesn't mean that activities are not going to go on. In other words, are there plans not to do a public budget, not to do program budget? No. In other words, will there, if we don't prioritize something in a certain way, does that mean something will stop being done? I just wanted to clarify.
Well, for me to clarify, the concern I have is, is not that, oh, well, it will happen, no. This is the time where we, where we're committing, I think, on our strategic decision-making, you know, on resource allocation. Are we committing to the intentionality? Like, are we going to elevate it and intentionally do it? And that's my concern, that if we don't say that we're going to intentionally do it by default, I think that's going to be perceived as we didn't intentionally do it. And I don't want to be in the boat where we're saying our primary, our highest grade here was go get more, but we didn't treat with, you know, deference the stakeholders with the same intentionality in the grading process.
One is, these are exactly the conversations we want from you that'll help us. It may end up amending some of the language that combines the spirit of something that was just below the cutoff to something that was highly ranked, and we look forward to the discussion. I do think what's helpful for us with this, what are the key things you want us focusing on as a division? And then, as you'll see in the next document, the performance objectives, the performance measures, the performance targets, to say we're going to deliver on what we said we're going to focus on, which is one of the things I've heard the board say. So, I think, I think through the conversations, we're going to get closer to where you all want to be as you see the things that you feel still need to be tweaked.
Okay, I have Ms. Evans, Mr. Anna Kofax, Ms. Corbett Sanders, then obviously if you want to comment on other things that people have already said, Kees Kamara, and McGlocklin. Okay, so, Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that went into this. I will say, I think that some of these have gotten lost in translation. I'm looking at the original desired outcome that has been melded into something else. And I think in a number of cases, the original was preferable. And just as one example, I'll start on the first page on...
You're on the other document now.
I'm on this document, whatever this is. Is this the appendix? For example, the amended document doesn't say anything about early childhood education specifically, and the board rated that very high, extremely high, and it's not even mentioned in our desired outcome. Now, if you look over at the measures and the objectives, then it gets picked up. But then, I'm also seeing that under objectives, one-to-one in grade three to 12 is one of the objectives, even though I'm not seeing that as one of our highest goals. So, it's been scooted in there under objectives, even though we had rated it somewhat lower. And I'm looking at desired outcome 14, cultural competency and sensitivity. I'm looking at the redo on that, and to my mind, that's just not the same at all. I mean, it's a very different thing. And I think staff was probably trying to be more general in order to capture more, but if our goal is to actually be very strategic and very focused, then I think we need to stay focused. And all of that, again, on this one, the original was FCPS will demonstrate cultural competency and sensitivity with families, students, and employees, and that was rated very high. It was a, well, 4.56 by the board. And all of these, on the achievement and the attainment, it's all about things like professional development of employees, and employees will be satisfied with their career growth, and a number of things that have, it just doesn't have to do with a measurement of cultural sensitivity of our students. And so, and then, I guess with the healthy life choices, some of us feel very strongly about student health, and I see that some of the measures are excellent measures, but it's morphed into promote, just promote student and employee well-being. And I, you know, again, I think the original was more focused, and I think it was more robust, and I think it would be better to stick with what the original was, and actually maybe even have more measures on student health. I think the ones that are here by and large are excellent measures, but, you know, there's certainly others on student health that we could measure. And then, I guess the last one I'll mention is desired outcome 27. Again, I feel like the original goal said it better than, you know, enhancing competitive employment practices, which is, which is very vague. So, I think in some cases, we need to go back to the original and actually be more focused rather than less so.
We appreciate that feedback, and that's part of, we crosswalked, right? The transparency is, it didn't just disappear. We've got the elements to go, actually, we like the amend, no, we like the old language, and we can create a hybrid of some of the new language if you think it better consolidates our pieces, or we can keep separate out. I would say probably leadership team was trying to get the numbers down a little. I mean, let's, I'll be honest, that's part of it, but if we need to go up a little, it's finding the right balance. We don't want to go up so high, back to the 32, where everybody feels like there's 32 things, five actions around those 32, and we're back to 150 things to do. But we, I certainly hear what you're saying, and if language more precisely gets us at the goal, and we need to tweak our performance objectives or measures to match it, we are certainly willing to hear that feedback from the board.
But I actually think that some of this language is less focused.
Right, right, right.
And it doesn't really hone in on, on what... And, and it, it doesn't really hone in on, on what we actually rate it as, as what we believed were our top goals.
We can take that feedback and make it before. This is obviously, is showing you for the first time, the work complete?
No, I understand. I understand. And that's, that's why we're here. We're getting, we're getting feedback from, from looking at this document for the first time.
And Dr. Braybrand, I have a question before we go on. Keeping track of people's comments and where we're going with that? Yes?
Because Chloe, there's a lot of, okay, so you all over there, we're confident we're capturing it. Okay, I feel better. Ms. Darna Kofex.
I started out just having a question for Elizabeth, but I have some other comments as well. So Elizabeth, my question to you is that rather than where we are, develop advocacy program, you want it goal, you want something with goal 32? Is that the number? I'm trying to just make sure I understand completely what you said. So if you go to page A5 on this document.
A6.
A6. So not 32. What number are you talking about then?
34.
Stakeholders will understand how financial resources would be utilized. So, but I, yeah, I saw number 32 also as, as something that I...
Because that's at the top of page four. So I said, they said they, hopefully, we would wrap in what was at the top of page four, which is, which is, you're correct, is 32. But my problem was, is that you had 35 over in the first matrix on three, at the bottom of three is really the only one that elevated out of that grouping. But I don't understand how you can have 35 if you don't have 34. That's my point.
Okay. Because I was thinking 32. But, but that's okay. It's kind of the same thing. It's, it's more or less the same thing. Okay, all right. So that one is fine. So I appreciate all the work that is done and I understand the desire to succinctly put everything here. But I am a little bit agreeing with Sandy saying some of the things. And I know we, the, the board before the last change in the board, before the last election, the board that did this, we were painstaking in our, in our information. So when you say, you know, we talk about promote student, the desired outcome number 24, I remember just wordsmithing that. And it wasn't like wordsmithing it to death. It was just making certain everything was. So that one, I really do feel like that's something where Sandy, and like you're saying, this is, this is the conversation and it's not a criticism.
And actually, this is exactly, this is, this is good stuff. This is the conversation that's going to make the plan better. I've got no problem making that change back, the 24 over the, over the desired.
And it's, it's very important to point out that, that really that's part of this process. So we, we brought you the recommendations that we would bring to the table, and then looking at how we can take the original language, some of the second amended language, some of the third amended language, to create a plan that will help us move the system forward. So this is the kind of discussion that we're, that we're looking for. But, but I certainly wouldn't want any board members to think that, that the plan that we brought was the final plan and we want you to sign off on it.
No, we understand that, Marty. Thank you so much. No, it, it's not that. I think it's just because some of the process was, it wasn't painstaking, but it was very thoughtful. And then sometimes, you know, you, and I understand the need and the desire for the, the document that's communicated out to the public to be succinct and for the public to understand it. But I do think there's probably some things there that need to be tweaked a little. So that...
Can I just, one other thing on that. One, one is trying to shrink down the, the number. And you all will give us feedback on whether we shrunk too much or the language around the shrinking. The other is adding in these performance measures and targets more clearly, so that you're not getting the 100-page resource goal, oh my gosh, we threw everything in there, you know? And, right. So that you can really clearly go, did we make this goal or not? And what are the targets you want to set with me to say, here's where our baseline performance is and here's where we want to go?
Right.
So that the school community, and you can each year go, wow, we really made, we really helped with social, emotional well-being of kids. We're still seeing struggle with the achievement gap. Kind of putting it all tighter in one place than sort of this revolving goal reporting that kind of comes at different times. And then, did, did you get what you wanted in there? Did we show the results of how well we did or where we're still left behind? So it's two moves that we're trying to do here, and we'll continue to want your feedback on both.
And, and I think, you know, when you do look at the performance measures, some of the, the original desired outcomes are being addressed. So I get that. I also concur with the comments made about needing to have pre-K, mention it in that first desired outcome. Because there is no mention of, you know, add a sentence, add, you know, and however we want to do that.
Desired outcome nine, having that language more clearly included. Okay.
Yes, yes. And then finally, and I think we do this well already, but I guess I would ask, because it was high, and we, we are doing it well, but if we don't express the intentionality of it, so on page A3, under goal two, caring culture, under engaged communities, will we provide additional communication and community support? That one, I feel is, it was a 422, which, but it didn't make four or five, so it didn't... I'm not sure if I see that anywhere. And, and also, yeah, I was also unfortunately not able to make that last meeting. But I think that's important to, I think we do it, but I think if it's not in here somewhere, and I'm trying to help you here, where we could put it. I don't know. Let me think about it and I'll make a suggestion later. But that's, that, that would be number 17 on, under caring culture.
Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the comments my colleagues have made thus far because I think we're all struggling with the same challenge, which is that this is supposed to be a strategic plan with real and meaningful objectives and measurable outcomes. And the frustration that some have expressed with where we're at today is that we don't necessarily have those measurable outcomes. So I think that the second document does get us moving in that direction, although really need to balance out what they have. The other thing that is interesting in this document is that we are kind of mixing apples and oranges with having strategies and tactics. And from my perspective, you know, things like the advocacy piece and the financial transparency piece, those are just good governance. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be a strategy. It is no duh. Of course, we are going to use sound financial management practices in how we develop our budget. And how we, you know, portray that budget is in a transparent manner. And so I would rather see us as a system say, you know, that's not necessarily a strategy. It is a standard operating procedure. And when we don't have things done in a transparent manner and clearly linked to our strategic objectives, then you're going to be held accountable for that anyway, because it doesn't necessarily have to be spelled out. Similarly, with advocacy, that will be something that is, you know, we can certainly spell it out here, but I don't really think that that is a strategic objective. That is a standard operating procedure when we are dependent or codependent on other organizations. So then it brings me back to, you know, we've, we've kind of watered down some of the language in the second column. And by watering it down, I think we end up having the challenge of not being very intentional about what we want to achieve. And I think that when we're not intentional, then we struggle with how do we hold ourselves accountable? And so I would be more apt to go back to the original language rather than watering it down with a blended language. Because when you do that and you take into account that our budgeting is going to be linked to our strategic plan and our advocacy is going to be linked to how we portray our strategic plan and are able to communicate it effectively with our stakeholders, then you're still only talking about eight or nine outcomes total. And with those eight or nine outcomes, I think then, looking at the second document, you have made huge progress in being more intentional in what the objectives are, or what we hope to achieve and those measures. And then we can focus on maybe crystallizing that a bit more.
And just for the record, right? I mean, we, we really shrunk it. If we kept the original language that reflected your priorities, we would have, if I'm wrong in my math, Marty, I was social studies teacher, eight, eight items off the desired and kept that original language. So that's feedback. Very helpful.
Okay, Ms. Kies Kamara?
Well, I think at this point, I'm agreeing with a lot of people. I am concerned about some of the language that's been dropped out, particularly cultural competency. And I'm agreeing with Ms. Schultz with respect to the resource management. I, I felt like some of the language that I felt was important was dropped out of that. And so I certainly want to minimize, but I don't want to lose the core meaning. And so I, I think we still have a ways to go without being repetitive. But I don't want to repeat what everybody else has already said.
Ms. McGlocklin?
In the interest of time, I'm sure all 12 of us could probably spend a couple hours telling you how we hope we could make this more meaningful. So I'll try to stay as high level as I can. I've struggled with the original strategic planning night. I very much thought that it was basically a love letter to our community on what we want it to be. And, and, I mean, I appreciate the chuckle, but I'm, I'm not trying to be flippant. It, it was everything we want to bring and promise to our community, and that's great. I think we want the community to know where we are. But the goal was a strategic plan. And there's been efforts to make it better. I very much appreciate the hours that leadership team and you've spent on this, the hours that my colleagues and I have spent on this. But I'm very worried about what I see here today. From everything that people have said about how the language, in an effort to distill it down and, and be more succinct, it, it actually starts to say nothing. And I, I pulled up Arlington Public Schools' strategic plan because when we first created this with Dr. Garza and Hank Jometro was trying to help us with it, a couple of us looked at the first effort and, and got really concerned. But none of us had a lot of experience with creating one. And so one of my colleagues pulled up Arlington's, and I just pulled it up again. And Arlington's has five goals, 18 strategies, and 57 desired outcomes. And I didn't bother counting the data sources. But even just at a macro level, making your commitment to the community, what are our five overarching goals? What are the strategies to get us there? What are the desired outcomes that we want then from these strategies? And then what are the data sources that we're going to use? It, it really does read very well. And the language is intentional. So people do what, know what we're trying to communicate out. And so I guess I would say my biggest concern, number one, is I think the language doesn't communicate at all. I think, I feel like we went backwards instead of forwards. And the other thing is that, I guess, and this is to staff, how did you determine, and this is, you know, I don't have a statistical background, but I, I am looking at these ratings of where we then started to highlight, okay, if it got this magical number of 4.5, then suddenly it became where we had board coalescing. We have 12 distinct individuals on this board, and we benefit frankly from having the diverse perspectives coming in. But as a result, getting a strong, you know, unanimity among our 12, I mean, look at our average votes on any given issue. We're not getting it 12 a lot of times. So I worry about setting the benchmark of, oh, well, it needs to have been at a 4.5 or above. And I'm looking at the things that fell anywhere in a four and above. And frankly, I think that they do reflect the board's interest. And so I would like, I guess, from a process standpoint, someone help explain to me why if it didn't hit at a 4.5 or above, you all left it below the line? Because I think it, it doesn't reflect well on this board, quite frankly. If I were a member of this community, looking at some of these and said, oh, well, if it didn't have a 4.5, the board didn't place as high of value on it, I think we look bad. Because I actually don't think that's where this board is in the six years I've served. So there's things that have a 4.22, and it's a big priority, this board. And I'm going to give you one. Under engaged communities will be provided additional communication and community support, 4.22. I bet if you put hands around this table, we'd actually get the, all 12 on that one. And yet we're communicating out that it's not. So help me understand where we got to this 4.5 first.
Okay, so there were a couple things that played into the 4.5. One was that we were looking really for the highest priorities in that five. It was a one through five scale, so the five were the ones that would be the highest priority. We bumped it down to 4.5 in part to capture things that were closest to that top mark. The second thing, though, that was guiding us comes from the literature on what makes a very strong strategic plan is, and that was around the issue of trying not to have more than six critical drivers or goals. And so in part, looking at the 4.5 got us to eight of yours. And so that was also one of the reasons that we ended up with focusing on the 4.5, because the 4.5 also matched what literature says in terms of when you're doing strategic planning, trying not to have more than six things that are driving what you're trying to get done.
And, and I appreciate you saying that because that's one of the strengths of the Arlington strategic plan, is they do have five goals. But then from their five, they're able to then identify the 18 strategies that they're going to focus on putting through. And, and so I actually think if, if we as a board read Arlington's strategic plan and you looked at what their five goals are, we wouldn't have any problem with saying, sure, Dr. Braybrand, let's make those five our focus. I, I don't think it's going to be a problem getting this board to, to solidify around five goals. I, I think it's a matter of having those goals be comprehensive enough that they capture it. But I'm, I will say, Dr. Braybrand, it's very concerning to me that the approach was simply, well, five was the highest and, and you didn't get there, so we just went to 4.5. There, there should be some statistical analysis on how we decided where we drew the line. But either way, I, I think maybe it's how we approached this. And, and my colleagues know I'm not a fan of dots. I never have been. And Elizabeth, you missed the last session. You didn't miss anything. Because we finally realized after, I think we spent an hour and a half, Dr. Braybrand, wrestling with the process and not sure how to get us there. And finally, the only thing we could decide to do was just throw up your dots and we went home. And, and we didn't even talk. We talked about our, our concerns about the, how we were going to approach this, and then we finally just threw up the dots and went home. So we actually, as a board, have, will need to probably have more robust conversation about where we've fallen out. But I, I think, to sum this up, my colleagues, I'm with every... But, I think, to sum this up, my colleagues, I'm with every single one of you who've spoken so far. I don't think this is where we wanted to end up being. And, the refined language is actually, I think, going to create greater problems than helping us.
I just want to say, listen, I've already heard consensus. We can take the desired outcome language we have, our eight or nine, right? I mean, I don't see that as a big sticking point. We're not, we're here in a work session to go through these and move it to that. That's, you know, there's not a problem. It's all on the page still. We didn't wipe it away and act like it didn't exist. You like your language better than the amended, that's fine. That's eight or nine. And really, it's about tweaking maybe one or two on the, that fiscal, the resource stewardship to tighten that one up, and we're at 10 or less. So, you know, it is nice to get to five. I don't want us to look at other systems and go, they got the five, we've got to get to five either. We need you all to feel good about what the goals are so that as we start to develop the strategies and have these performance measures build around them, that you feel good about them. But, I actually don't think we're that far off, and this is exactly the feedback we want so that we don't get down the road with something that the great majority of this board isn't in favor of.
And we really did see this as a starting point. We all have to have a place to start. We all have to have a document that begins a conversation. So, we do see this as that document that will start that conversation. So, you can have the discussion as to whether or not we're on target, both you as a board and we as staff, and then what items you feel need to be placed in terms of a higher priority. And I made a comment earlier about the fact that we value all of these items on this list, and we weren't really placing value on these items, but we were really looking at the priority that we need to engage in to do this work. You struggle with this work, we struggle with it as staff. Because if you think about the leadership team table, you know, we're talking about the work that we're bringing to the system. And for us to prioritize that work, we had to step back and say, well, we value all of this work. There are some things here that provide much benefit to the system. And at the same time, we still had to then prioritize and say that, but we should start with this point first, and then do this, and then do this. And so, that's where we are tonight, trying to figure out what the starting point should be, what we should add, what we should take away, so that we can make a stronger document for you.
I have Ms. Heinz, and then Ms. Schultz. Oh, and Ms. Paulcheck.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try not to repeat, but this, my understanding of a strategic plan is, I think that it's not about business as usual, standard operating, right? We don't need a strategic plan for keeping the lights on and the tires inflated, right? This is for stuff that's not only important, I mean, keeping the lights on is important, right? This is for stuff that it's important, but also is not, to our way of thinking, happening as well or as much as it should be. That's what I think. These are the areas where we feel like we need to see change and progress, right? So, that's, when I was throwing my dots up there, that's what I was thinking about. Not that some of these things are less or more important, but they have that combination of they're important, and we need to work harder on them. So, when I look at, we need to work harder, and I think the board needs to see some actual outcomes on these particular things. So, and again, I'm probably just going to be reiterating, but cultural competency and sensitivity, when you turn that into focused, high-quality professional development, my assumption is we are doing focused, high-quality professional development just as we're keeping the lights on, right? But, it's in this area of cultural competency that I don't see it happening, and we know we need to. So, that's why I think that makes sense. I actually look at what you did, though, with the combining the three student outcomes, student achievement into one, I think that's kind of neat. I mean, I think it works. I can see adding something specific about early childhood, but when I look at the next document, I see that early childhood is one of the things that is specifically going to be worked on and embedded in that. So, from my mind, we don't have to put that in the outcome, but I wouldn't argue against it. So, that's just my two cents.
Ms. Paulcheck?
Yes, thank you. I'm kind of listening to what my colleagues are saying and trying to go through this. I guess I'm in a mixed boat. I personally really appreciate the fact that, I think like Ms. Heinz was saying, we are finding areas, right, where we can start to combine. Maybe not all of them work, but I do think, some of them, and the wordsmithing, that's a separate story. I guess my question, before I go into specifics, is, I'm trying to understand, so we've talked a little bit about, these are all our priorities, and then we've also discussed, well, and I know you have, Dr. Brabran, what do we start with, and then what comes next? So, I guess my question is, as we're going through this, is there a consideration for, maybe not a specific timeframe, but ordering as opposed to what might feel more like eliminating at this point? Has that been talked about?
No, I think that's feedback we'd love from you. We could have different timeframes on these that as some things were completed, we could add more things onto the plan as some drop off, and then they become part of the business as usual culture, right?
Right.
And if you wanted to see it or wanted to check back on it, but we wanted to bring you, see, what I think's happened right now, we brought you the whole kitchen sink of 200 things, pages and pages, and then, well, what do we really have? Instead of saying, where are we falling short? What do we want to measure and then target against, and then see whether we're actually making our performance targets or not? So, I do think at some point, things that aren't on the list, we need to be sure, are they, are we continuing to do them? But, at the present level, there's not going to be more of it or expansion of it, but, you know, we want it eliminated. Are there some things that maybe we would say we would no longer do? I don't want to take eliminating off the table. Some might just be pausing, we're not doing any more of that until it becomes a strategic division priority. We want it to be removed from a school, from a school that's doing it, but it wouldn't necessarily be added.
Right.
And I think the other thing for the board is, there's 1,000 things you could measure. Here are eight or nine things, then we're going to have the performance measures around those, and that's going to be the focus of what the board's going to want to look at and see reports about, and monitor, how much better are we this year than we were last year? But, I'm actually, I'm leaving so far in a much better place. I'm not, I'm not, when you have consensus feedback, I have no problem keeping desired outcomes the same. And if, like, the board says, oh, you know, actually, the first one of those three into the amended one is good, but keep all the rest, the specifics as they are, or whatever we come to, that part is the language part. I don't want to get too hung up there. We can keep the original language, and then we can move to look at whether you think the performance objectives and measures are going to be the right ones to help make us go in the direction. And that's where some of what, like Ms. Evans already said, I don't see the measure here yet, let's come up with something else, and we can go back and work on. So that, you know, I'd love to, by mid-year, we really have something that feels nice and tight for you all, that we can, we can share out.
Right, so I guess I appreciate that. And my question, Marty, my question would be, A, is it possible to create that kind of order now, rather than saying, we're just going to drop some things and promise you they're still there, right? Is there a way? I haven't worked on a strategic plan before, I don't know if there's a way to do that. And B, I guess I'd like for us to figure out how we want to have the conversation. I'm not necessarily saying, personally, let's keep every single desired outcome the way we had it. I think, it sounds like most of my colleagues, you know, and I agree, that we don't want to completely say, okay, everything that was recommended, we want to do that. But, how do you envision the conversation of the next steps for those outcomes, and then the possibility of ordering priorities?
Well, certainly taking that input here at the table is always good for us. We can certainly meet with individual school board members who would like to, you know, provide us some information on how we can make the plan stronger, and add that, and then take it back to the board so that they can weigh in on the entire plan. So, that kind of feedback is good for us. And I know that we're having lots of discussions around the first document, but we kind of crept into that second document without really going through it, and without really understanding how it's been developed, the formatting. And so, what I'd like to do is maybe take an opportunity to go into that second document a little more, so that you can get a better understanding of performance objectives, performance measures, and those targets. And that might help with some of the language that you're seeing with our recommendations with the desired outcomes, and help allay some of those fears that we may not be focusing on the things that you would like us to focus on as a system.
I'd like to suggest, we have two more people for go-backs, and then go back in and take a look at that. I'd also would like to, we can review, I'm trying to listen to various people's ideas, particularly where people have seen areas that didn't make the 4.5 cutoff but seemed to be interested. Because I'm thinking of two of those, and I don't know, Ms. Melberg, how many others you have picked up on that? Pardon? Okay, because I'm looking, I want to make sure that we haven't lost any of that, because that will take a little greater discussion, because I don't want to skip over some of the things that some of people have said. Okay, Ms. Schultz for a go-back?
Just one thing that I didn't mention before, I was waiting to see. Goal eight, which is on A2 towards the bottom, this is the second one that I'm a little bit shocked that was not, frankly, at almost the top, that grading...
Wait, Elizabeth, can you tell, again, where are you?
I think she's in the first document, right?
First document, goal eight...
Oh, okay, thank you.
At the bottom of A2. Grading will be an accurate reflection of learning. If grading isn't an accurate reflection of learning, and if that isn't the focus in the classroom to clearly associate how we're assessing students and what their grade is with what they know, I'm not exactly sure what we're about. Like, to me, that sort of would, I mean, that's student achievement, but taking the professional development component and tracking it back to, and I'll give you a, for example, one of my frustrations is sometimes a lack of staff reporting on the correlation between students who do maybe pass Excel on, or pass proficient, or even fail in SOL, and how that correlates to the grade that was in their classroom. Are they getting, you know, sixes and sevens on IBs and fives on AP exams, but getting a C in the course? There is a complete lack of correlation to grading to that which a student knows. Or, the inverse could be true, is that they're getting an A in the class and they're, you know, not passing AP and IB exams. And, to me, this is sort of the ultimate nexus of having truly professional teachers who feel vested in teacher-led professional development, that isn't top-down, that's relevant, that ties curriculum to the speed of the students in the classroom, and sort of allows that individualized approach to education. If we don't tie together, from a strategic nature, our resources, to drive the resources back into the classroom, and that what we measure, I mean, this is the end of the strategic plan. We're talking about potentially grading ourselves on the work that we do with $2.8 billion, and we're saying we don't necessarily need to correlate as a priority how we grade students, and whether that correlates to what they know, and whether we've imparted knowledge. So, that one, I don't, and Ms. McLaughlin, I'll give you a high-five and then maybe take half of it back, in that the correlation of, and I haven't looked at Arlington's strategic plan, but this needs to be a roadmap. This needs to be a roadmap of, how do we want Dr. Brabran and LT to work with staff to use strategies to get to things we want them to get to, so that they're the outcomes that we desire? So, you're going to have a lot more strategies than you are going to have goals and outcomes. Because you need lots of strategies in order to get to where you're going. I do think, I'm not going to quibble about 4.5 or 4.2 or whatever, there has to be a natural break at some point, and I'm imagining, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I interpreted what you said as 4.5 sort of ended up being a natural break. Is that...
Well, really, that 4.5 rounds up to five, and so, that's, so it's a natural break in the sense that it rounds up to five.
But, the 4.5 in terms of differentiating to get to a certain number... It, right, because you could, if you drop it down to 4.2, you could wind up with 20, or you could drop it down to 3.8, and you could wind up with 25. And the whole point is to actually be strategic.
According to this...
Okay.
If you read it, that's not what we're saying.
Okay, that's why I said I'd only get to take back half of the high-five. So, I'm frustrated about the lack of discussion around the goal eight at A2, just because I think that's penultimately, we're going to measure the students, but we're not necessarily going to emphasize and direct, from a strategic nature, the resources with our educators to ensure that our grading accurately reflects their knowledge.
Mrs. Schultz, I have a response just to that. Do you want us to do that, or just not, right now?
Well, I'd like to, I guess we can respond back. We do need to get to the other piece of it, but I will take as many speakers as we need to finish this part of it. So, I'll come back to you, McLaughlin, Evans, and I'll come back to Ms. Heinz, who wants to comment on Ms. Schultz. So, Ms. McLaughlin?
I'd welcome Pat actually being on respond to Elizabeth while we're on the topic.
All right. If you would like to yield your time.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Who else is waiting? Sandy? Okay, yeah. What are you, I don't want to jump, I'll jump you because you don't care, but I don't want to jump Sandy if she cares.
Well, part of what I was going to say does relate to that, which is that, again, we have to go back to the fact that all of this is important, you know, that we are not losing anything out of the strategic plan. And I think, and Tammy is absolutely right, we did agonize over the language of it. We looked very, very carefully at it, and, you know, we're very thoughtful about it. So, we, and I don't think Dr. Brabran or staff are saying we're losing any of it. We're trying to bring it up to what is really the most important goal. And so, grading, yes, I don't disagree with you, Elizabeth, about it, you know, it has to accurately reflect. I don't think that's where we are, need to put our top resources. So, it's not that it's not important, because all of them are important. So, that's what I would say about that, and, I mean, that was going to be one of my points, and I don't know, and I'll go back to, I had something else as well, but as far as that goes, it doesn't mean that it's not important, it's just that we, either we think we're already doing it, or it's, as Karen said, it's being done, you know, it's just plain old being done. It's, yeah, it's, so.
Well, if I could... Yeah, let me go back to Ms. Heinz.
Okay, just briefly, and on that one especially, the whether grades reflect learning. Staff spent two exhaustive years looking into that, if you recall, and came up with some changes, and had a whole teacher team and a whole bunch of people working on that. So, they actually made some changes, system-wide. And I always think we should give staff and folks in the buildings a chance to implement the latest thing we're asking them to do, before we go out and measure and reassess and change things up on them again. So, that's why I don't give it a huge strategic priority right now.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Moon hasn't spoken yet, so I'll call him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very interesting conversation we're having this evening. Thinking back to the last work session on this one, as I remember putting up my dots, you know, deciding where to put, you know, my dots on, that what I was, was basically, I think Ms. Heinz might have said this, that as I was putting dots, what I had on my mind was this. Our strategic plan, we probably don't want to do this kind of in-depth review of a strategic plan every year. However, at the same time, it's a living document, we'll be reviewing, we'll have to, we'll leave the document from time to time. But, for that day's work session exercise, I was trying to focus on, what would be if we were to be deciding upon, just looking at the next year, next couple of years, next few years, what do I consider to be more important goals, targets, measures, outcomes? Am I seeking for us to focus on? So, when Mr. Schultz talked about grading will be an accurate reflection of learning, I fully agree, grading should be an accurate reflection of learning. However, should that be our focus for the next year, next couple of years? Should we put most of our energy looking at that issue? I think, I thought not. That is why I... That is why I didn't consider it to be, you know, as important as some other, some other outcomes. I had put my thoughts with a five or a four. So, so, I mean, I, I appreciate, and where did it go? Superintendent disappeared.
He's listening. He can, he can hear from the back of his head.
Sure. You know, overall, you know, overall strategy, overall approach to reduce the number of outcomes, whether, whether I want to stick to a six, five, or 10, that's a debatable. But again, reducing it way below 30, I agree. For me, for me, instead of looking at the desired outcome language, for me, more important things are performance objectives and performance measures, rather than what are we going to actually measure? Because, you know, by, by agreeing, by making a decision on the measures, we are going to be measures, that entire school session will focus on those measures. And I assume that, that you are, we are going to have a performance targets for every measure. Is that correct? But that's where we're going to put our focus on. All our energy and research is going to go see whether we're going to meet those targets. So I am less concerned about exact language of the outcome we need to have. You know, if we can get to the point where we have some more discussion on these measures and objectives, hopefully tonight, rather than just sticking with the, you know, language for the outcomes. I mean, that's my suggestion to my colleagues.
Yeah, I have two more, and then I think we need to go on. Did you need to-
I just wanted to make one comment. I know, Pat, Ms. Hines, you shared there were some grading, while I was away for five years, there was some grading regulations changed, I think, on retakes and some other things. There was also, right as I left, and I just wanted to verify it with Sloan, we did go to standard-based report card grading at the elementary school.
Yes, right.
So we've, we've, I don't want you, I want you to decide as a board what you think is important, but I just wanted to check operationally those two things as you all make decisions about your priorities, and that's why I stepped away.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, then Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
So I think part of the challenge we have with the strategic plan is, again, it's our ability to communicate out to the public what we consider our strategic focus. And so while I understand what Ms. Hines was giving context to, we might be doing a lot of these things, but we're the ones where we, we think we're not succeeding as well. Where I worry though is how the public understands to Ms. Corbett-Sanders' terminology of the standard operating procedure. There are things that every single year we want to hold you and the system accountable to, and it is going to be things like accurate grading and reporting. And if we aren't getting those annual reports in some fashion, then just because, as Ms. Hines pointed out, that there was a working group, and it didn't involve the whole system, but it was a working group of people who worked for two years to identify things to improve on, but this board right now, if it was put in front of a camera and a microphone, could not explain, so, how did that turn out? Because we haven't had a presentation that said, after you did this grading reporting, what was the outcome? What has been the annual outcome? So, we, we still struggle sometimes if we put initiative in, and then there is no measuring on, was it successful or not? So, you know-
Which if I could just say, if I don't mind, just to share what you just said and what Mr. Moon just said, is what, when we get to the second document, I think is really going to be a leap forward, is the objectives, the measures, and the targets around what you all do choose, and it's going to come back to you on a regular basis to say, up, down, great, you made a great progress and a great job, oop, you're still short and you need to keep working on this, or, oh my God, this is going in the wrong direction. What's, what's a new plan?
And I appreciate you saying that, and so I would say to Ms. Hines and others, if you, if you surveyed the students and the parents on what they thought was a strategic focus, they want to know that the work they do in the classroom is accurately reflecting, reflecting their mastery and achievement. And if we don't have that in our strategic plan so that it's going to get reported annually, then we have to communicate out, where does it get reported? Where does it get measured? Where does it get monitored? And if it's not our strategic plan, then how else is the board and the community getting that? And maybe that's, again, for another day, I know we're trying to get to measures and, and outcomes, but I, I will also say, again, for anyone with, with curiosity, if you look at the Arlington Public Schools Strategic Plan, even the way it is physically laid out, it is very clear and readable. And I will just say that this is not, it is hard for the eye to digest it, so-
So, I, I need to just let you all know, this is not the strategic plan. This, this is a document that we're using for the board to get us to a finalized strategic plan, so I just do want to be very clear about that.
That's fine. I will make the humble request that staff go look at the Arlington, um, plan because the chart that they use, if you had put this into their draft the way they did it, my brain could actually read it quite clearly, what is the, the goal, the strategy, the desired outcome, and the data source. This one makes it really hard to figure out what it's telling.
And we would like to get to that second document, which is, it's a better representation of what that might look like in terms of the desired outcome, the performance objectives, those performance measures, and those performance targets.
I, I just want to clarify, Ms. McLaughlin is correct. We've just done another Student Town Hall, and I'm going to tell you, what, whether we've implemented a elementary report card or not, the reality is, especially for high school students, they know when there isn't fidelity. They know, they're talking to each other, they feel it, it's not even from, you know, just classroom to classroom, they know from building to building. They know that that person taking that exact same class in the, in the classroom next door, their teacher allows retakes, their teacher, you know, allows, you know, test corrections. They, they see it on the front lines, so we can say, oh, well, we already did that, we don't have to worry about it. I, I, I'm going, I'm going to push back very, very stridently and say that the kids on the ground will say they're concerned about whether or not grading reflects their acquisition of knowledge. So, you know, all I can do is fight on their behalf.
I just want to, I just want to finish, if you go to A4 on the chart that we're looking at here, um, just begin, Dr. Braybrand, going to the fact that I do have concerns how this was calculated and, and determined what fell out. If you look at overarching strategy seven, and you look at numbers 24 through 26, to Ms. Schultz's point, you got a 4.89, then you have a 4.33, a 4.33, 4.1, then a 3.89, and 2.78. Going again to, so, we're basically going to say based on this, and I, I felt like it was arbitrary, a 4.5 doesn't suddenly mean that was the natural break. If you look at it, the natural break might be somewhere either between the 3.89 and above because number 26 got a 2.78. But otherwise, I just worry about how we are arriving at which ones are getting dropped off, which ones aren't going to have the focus, and I, whether it's tonight or otherwise, at least it's for you to deliberate, but as a board member, this will continue to be a concern for me, that, that those ratings, um, of saying where we drew the line at 4.5, not, not good science in my mind.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, then we're going to go on to the other document.
I'm going to try to give some suggestion on a way forward, because I think what we're doing here is we're, um, mixing up strategy and strategic objectives from operational goals and compliance, uh, or fidelity of implementation is the, in ed you speak, but in organizations, in companies, they will do, they will have a whole organization that ensures that there's compliance management that says, if we've decided that we are going to have certain things as just the way it's going to happen in the system, which we do in the form of policy and regulations, then there's somebody who's responsible for ensuring that we're actually doing what we've said we'll do. That doesn't mean that grading is a strategic objective because it's kind of like the nuts and bolts of running a school system. You better have grading in fair and consistent grading as just a standard way of operating a school system. So, we probably don't, we don't necessarily need it as a strategic objective, but we need it to, we need to hold ourselves accountable to it. Kind of like when we introduced advanced math in elementary school. We said we were going to do it, and then, you know, how do we hold ourselves accountable for actually doing it? And so, if going forward and trying to make this a productive session tonight, what I'd like to see is almost having a, um, a parking lot for those pieces that we all believe are important operationally, that are today included in a strategic, in our strategic plan or strategic outcomes, but maybe are more appropriate as a focus of operational expectations. And then have you, Dr. Braybrand, come back to us with how you're going to make sure we know, we have confidence that those operational expectations are being adhered to.
Right. I, I actually wrote down earlier, um, what are our standard operating procedure measures? Right? Do we have some performance targets that are just our standard business that we could show you that would annually just not, not, there wouldn't be much else with it now? We would just be presenting those measures, and then if, oh, wow, that measure sparked a conversation of a deeper dive, we could add it to the strategic plan. To have the strategic indicators that we're really going to focus on, that we think we need to do better at, and then what are some base things that we just want to check in on, and those could just be measures that we would report? So, that's an idea I'm going to take back and percolate between now and-
And by doing that, what happens is that it becomes a mindset within the organization that when we adopt a new policy or regulation, that we're actually expecting it to be done, and it doesn't mean that it's a strategic, um, initiative, it's just, there, those are the, for want of a better term, the bread and butter that we, we do as a school system.
Okay, let's go on and take a look at the second document, and as we do that, my sense is that some of the discussion that I'm hearing from my colleagues actually appears, and some of it in the performance objectives, and some of it appears in the performance measures. So, another way to look at it. So, Mr. Smith, if you want to go on to the next document.
Sure. So, I, I think that this document will look a bit more in terms of formatting, what a traditional strategic plan would look like. We've, we've discussed the first two columns, so the, the way that the coloring or the shading worked on this document, you have in the first column, we have your original desired outcome, uh, in the second column, we had that amended language that we had used on the prioritized plan where there were some questions about whether or not that language matched the first, we wanted to show the crosswalk with that. And then that third was, again, that, that final language that we were recommending to the board, and we've gotten some good feedback on that this evening. These last three columns, the first one, it talks about that intentionality. I'm going to give Ms. Rude an opportunity to walk us through these last three columns, but, you know, we, we focus on the desired outcomes. This gives us an opportunity in column four to look at those performance objectives. What is it that we want to do within the division? And then the fifth column focuses on those performance measures. What are we going to measure? I think that's very important for the board. And then the sixth, uh, column really focuses on those performance targets, where we would take the first three years of our plan, which we're in year three, looking at those, uh, the baseline for a lot of our measures, and then setting those performance targets. Now, what targets do we want to hit as a system? So what's that expected level of performance? So, Ms. Rude, if you would kind of take us through those three.
So, um, as Mr. Smith was saying, when you look at the fourth column, that's really trying to summarize what the division hopes to achieve, and you'll see that this really highlights the more specific intentions, um, that exist under each of the desired outcomes, and specifies what in particular, um, could be reported back to the school board in terms of being able to make a judgment about whether FCPS is making progress or achieving what it intends to achieve. So you'll see that as the performance objectives that's listed in the column that's numbered number four. And then the fifth column is a more specific measure. That would be an instrument or data point that could be used to actually quantify, um, the objective itself. How could we go about measuring it? And so there's a suggestion in that fifth column of how that might be measured. The final column, which is column six, establishes a target level of expected performance and, and would allow that charting of the progress over time. You'll see that that column right now is all listed as TBD or to be decided. That work would come after there was an agreed-upon list of measures. We would take a look at what's the current level of functioning or the baseline level of functioning, and then what would demonstrate progress over time, so what would be the expected levels over time? So these three columns try to capture for you an idea of where in particular you would have the information reported back to you so you could see whether or not FCPS is making progress on student success or caring culture, the premier workforce, or resource stewardship.
Lady, can, can you share with the board, for performance measures, we have baseline data for many of these, correct?
Yeah, so for many of these, you could figure out baseline, and usually we suggest you look over multiple years, so you're not just picking one year, but we could go back over the last three years, and for many of these, pick up the information and be able to report out to you what is the current level of functioning over the last couple of years.
So if the board likes these, we can, you know, one of the next meetings or work session, we'd love to bring this back with that baseline data done. If you want something like Sandy said, up, you're missing this, let's put this in, we can go and get the baseline data for that if we have it, and then we can work on, hey, okay, we're here, where do we think is responsible to go over the next year or two as an organization around that particular performance measure?
And if you note, Dr. Braybrand and, and board, the objectives and measures that we have here are those that are aligned to the, the desired outcomes in this document. And if you remember, earlier on, I said that we took a bit of license because we did want to get to this point tonight to actually provide a framework for you, uh, to get some feedback on whether or not we were moving in the right direction. So, you know, the document that you have before you is, is aligned to what we currently have for desired outcomes. If you would like us to change or amend those desired outcomes, we would then bring back , uh, new performance, uh, objectives and new performance measures that would then be aligned to those particular desired outcomes.
But Marty, just speaking out loud for the board, because a lot of it was around columns one versus column three, or, excuse me, column one versus column two, um, and many of them wanting column one, these performance measures would be fine if we use the original column one desired outcome. So, we don't really have to go back and start over.
No, no, they would be unless the board wanted to add-
Pick a different measure.
A few more measures.
Right, okay.
Quick, yes.
Yes, a quick process question. When, the prior document we were working with and now the one we have, um, we go from goal to the overarching strategy, and then this is the outcome to performance objectives and measures. So I'm just trying to follow this a little bit. Where am I going from if a desired outcome is promote student and employee well-being? You see desired outcome, and then the performance objective, where's the strategy crosswalk or the strategy linkage? So that as I'm reading this, I'm looking at, here's the outcome we want, here's the strategy you're proposing, and then how this aligns with the objective, and, I mean, I get the measures part, but I'm not getting the connection between what happened to strategy because you need to know the strategy in context in order then look at what your objectives and measures are going to be.
And, and I think in our previous plan, when you look at those strategies, we identified those as the actions that we would take to get there, and, uh, we, we haven't gone into the actions within this document. We're still at a very high level in terms of the desired outcomes, um, what those objectives would be and what those measured would be, and then we would create the actions that would align to these objectives and measures. So, so we haven't placed those actions here in this plan.
But the existing strategic plan, you already laid out what your overarching strategy is. So, I, I'm just saying, it's almost like a column is missing in this document here.
The overarching strategy in the original plan was a very- The overarching strategy in the original plan was a very high level strategy, and we looked at those more discrete strategies as actions in the previous plan, and we haven't added those actions here to this plan.
Okay.
So your feedback is you'd like them added, it'll be clear to understand how it matches up.
It's a transition issue. I mean, you're starting from one, I mean, just-
Okay.
Okay, I have Ms. Schultz and then Ms. Evans.
Okay, so I've been pretty good up till now. Now I'm gonna, now I feel like is when I lose my cool a little bit. I, I don't understand this at all. I, I really don't. And let me, let me give you a couple of examples. The very first thing that's on here at the top of infinitesimally number five, page five, four performance objectives under original ignite desired outcome one. All students will have experiences prior to entering FCPS kindergarten that develop fundamental, foundational literacy and numeracy. Percentage of kindergartners entering FCPS in the fall and foundational literacy and numeracy is what will be measured. This isn't even in our wheelhouse. This is out of our sphere of control. Why would we put as a strategic measurement that children will do something before they ever are, are our students? So like right off the bat, right out of the gate, you're saying that children will do something before they ever get to us and we'll measure when they walk in the door. Measure against what? So I, I don't, I don't understand something like that. I'll give you another for example, in that same box further down, the percentage of elementary schools offering, offering advanced mathematics program, offering? I mean, if that's true, then the bullet before it in the previous column should say currently X number of FCPS elementary schools offer advanced mathematics, we will offer it in all schools by such and such a date. Now, now you have a path. Now you, you understand where we are, the benchmark is, I don't know, 70, 80%, 50%, 40%? I don't even know of how many schools don't offer it and how many will offer it. But that's measuring us, as is a little further down in the next, in the next box below, the percentage of, I've always had a problem with this, percentage of students enrolled in one or more AP or IB classes. That, that's a, uh, Richard, what's his name? No, Robert, what's his name with the Washington Post?
Jay Matthews.
Jay Matthews. Robert, Richard, Jay. You see, you see how much of an impression loss? This is measuring us. How many students enroll in one, like, and what's the correlation of those students to their grades or their students to their student interests or their students? We saw that report that talked about not the students who graduate, what are graduation percentages, not the number of students who go on to a four-year college. The shocker is the number who don't make it, the number who drop out, the connectivity of their learning to their interest, to their perseverance. You know, those are things that, I mean, this is measuring us. I don't understand things like the comparable percentage of students in a subgroup will in, will, will enroll in Algebra One by grade eight. So I, I'm, I'm going to unpeel, I'm going to unpack that euphemism. Is that, are you saying we're going to have a quota system that if there's 17% black students, we're going to have 17% in Algebra One? If there, if we're, if a certain population in Sully is 82% Asian, will we have 82% Asian in, in Algebra? I, I don't understand this at all.
Can we?
I, I know, I know, I know. I'm just saying, what's the, the desired goal here doesn't seem to be a whole lot about what the kids are learning or what their outcome is. It's a marker for us, for us to hold up as a beacon. Well, look, we're at, you know, and I won't, I won't mention a previous superintendent's name, but when we put a badge on our sleeve and say, well, X many percent of our students take one or more AP or IB classes, I, I don't know that you've said anything about what you're doing for kids in terms for them. What you're doing is you're putting a badge on your own sleeve. And so I'm not comfortable with where this is at all. We're talking about measuring things before kids or even our kids, and offering versus achieving, so.
Let's let Dr. Presidio jump in and Dr. Brabran.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
You know, process question and suggestion here that I want to be able to get through this document tonight, at least, at least to hear from staff, you know, how they came to this point, why they were making these suggestions rather than, you know, bogged down onto, you know, a couple of items right now and then not making a progress and have to meet again and go back to the same thing. So my humble question is, let's give an opportunity to staff to explain to the board how they came to these. I think I see 33 items, and then have maybe one by one or a block by block and, and have a discussion among the board members or even Q and A. But I want to be able to hear from staff why they thought these were important objectives.
Okay, yes, I'd like to let Dr. Presidio and the Dr. Brabran respond here.
All right, well, thank you very much. I wanted to try to address first a few of the specific questions that Ms. Schultz asked, and then maybe we can go back and talk about some of the other issues here pertinent to Mr. Moon's comments. I, I think the first thing that's important to recognize is understanding everything, you know, that we've already talked about at, at the table tonight, that this is not a perfect document, it's a draft, we can change anything that's here. But to try to explain some of the thinking about the alignment of these items, which I think is really, really important as somebody who's been responsible for reporting to the board in the past, and I, I think has received a lot of feedback from, from board members about the need to really be able to clearly articulate what is it that we're trying to measure, right? This is kind of back to data and context. What is it that we're trying to measure? What's our current status of performance against a performance target that we've set? And what are we doing about where we're at? And where do we go next? To try to provide the board better actionable information. So the format here was really to try to take those prioritized outcomes that the board had selected, which very closely align to the priorities that the leadership team had identified, and then to set some measurable objectives for each of those outcomes, be able to clearly define how we're going to measure those objectives and set a performance target that we would hold ourselves accountable to. Now, I think part of the challenge with looking at this is the very first one is student success, as it should be, that's the most important strategy, right? But when we look at this one, as Ms. Schultz was pointing out, we've taken the performance measures here, the performance objectives, and we've separated them out into opportunity measures, access measures, and attainment measures. So everything that we're looking at on page five are the opportunity measures, the access measures, and then on page six are the attainment measures. So page six are the student achievement outcomes, what students are achieving. Very specifically, as Ms. Schultz rightly pointed out, on page five, we don't see those. Those are on page six. And the reason that we chose to look at the opportunity, access, and attainment, instead of what we had done in the past, which we certainly could go back to just looking at the achievement gap as a whole, when we just look at the achievement gap as a whole and only look at those student achievement outcomes, sometimes we're missing where we need to make changes. It might be in the area-
Dr. Presidio, I don't understand though. If you're saying that though, if, 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 for example, I, I understand that, but it was my question, and, and, and as he's, as he's answering my question, I'd like to, I'd like some further specificity. So for example, if page five is just opportunity and access, then in the, in the, in column four, it says, for example, comparable percentage of students by subgroup will enroll in college level coursework while in high school.
That's right.
How is that, that, that's not, that's not opportunity. You're saying they will.
That's access. That's access.
But, but you're, but you're prescribing that they will enroll, and if they're not ready to enroll, or if, I don't even know that we have that as a goal as a board, that we want a certain number of kids taking college work in high school. So this isn't opportunity or this, creating the opportunity to do it, but saying prescriptively they, that a certain percentage will is not either, it's like beyond opportunity and attainment.
So, so let me try to address that, because I think that's a really good point, because as a board, you need to determine what are the appropriate measures, right? And you might determine that that is not something that you want to measure, right? We might not want to set that as a goal, and we might not, might not want to measure that. But the idea of distinguishing between opportunity, access, and attainment, taking this particular item, enrollment in college level courses while in high school, we believe that that could be a key indicator of success in making sure that our kids are college and career-ready when they leave the system. So if you take an example and say, for example, computer science as a dual enrollment college level course might be offered in some schools, but it might not be offered in others, that's an opportunity gap. Because if you're in a school where you can't even take that, that class, there's an opportunity gap for you. Then within a school where that course is offered, there might be access gaps with the students that are choosing to take that particular course. We might not have as many female students choosing to take that course, because that would be a subgroup, as male students, for example. And then we would look at attainment gaps and say, for the students that are taking that course, how are all of those students doing? So that was the idea with thinking about opportunity, access, and attainment gaps. And again, it's just a draft, it doesn't mean that we have to go with that format, but Ms. Schultz was pointing out some, kind of the nuance there, and I think it's important to understand it because it's different than how we've looked at or proposed to look at achievement gaps in the past.
That, that helps to explain, and the fact that the top of the blocks clearly says opportunity, access, and attainment, and I think not all of us saw that. Dr. Brabran?
I just want to say one other thing, just to reset here. I interviewed for this job, I took your feedback. I've heard from almost, I've met with every one of you who thought the plan, the strategic plan could be better than it is. That's all I'm trying to do, is make the plan better. It's a good plan, how do we make it better? I'm not saying what we brought tonight is perfect. We know it's not, that's why we're wanting to do this. So just know the spirit is, I, I shared, sometimes it's publicly, sometimes it's in closed session, that I want to be partners with you. That's the same spirit we bring you tonight. You know, people have worked very hard on this, though. I have a lot of folks spending a lot of time on leadership team. So if you, you know, if you feel this is not valuable for the board or for me to be doing, please direct me to do other things, or I have other things to do that would take up my time. But I, I feel like this is actually bringing us closer together. It may not feel like it every moment, but I think it is, and I, I do want you to know, we're going to take your feedback seriously and get something closer at the next time we meet to where I think you all want to go as a board. And, and I, I just want you to know that as we continue tonight, we're in the spirit of partnership and cooperation with you.
Madam Chair, could we just hear from staff?
Yes.
About what these are?
Yes, I, yeah, I would like to go back because this has been an important clarification, the opportunity, access, and attainment. So could we continue on if there are more clarification pieces as we work through this? We will, we will? Okay, we will, we will. Okay, no, but this is, yeah, this was an important context, okay?
Maybe if I could just give you a couple of clarifications, and then if there's any questions, I'd be happy to expand on it.
Right, because there's more people on the list.
So I want to take a look at column four, the performance objectives. And the very first one, again, that Ms. Schultz had pointed out with respect to kindergarten students enrolling with foundational literacy and numeracy skills, that is intended to be a measure of their preschool, the quality of their preschool experience. And we actually do have an assessment instrument that we're using now, our universal screener assessment, and we have baseline information on our kindergarten students, starting with this year's kindergartners of literacy and math. So that was the intent of that one. The second one in column four, performance-based assessments would be implemented. That one, I think deserves a little bit of clarification as well, because as you probably remember, the state had removed SOLs in some content areas and at some grade levels, and asked school systems and really challenged school systems to say, come up with your own assessments to measure learning in those grade levels and in those subject areas. And what we would really like to do is develop more of a balanced approach to assessment and use performance-based assessments in those grade levels and in those subject areas, and hopefully be able to demonstrate to the state that we can measure learning just as reliably and just as validly as we can with multiple choice assessments, and continue to have policy flexibility at those grade levels, those subject areas, and hopefully other grade levels and other subject areas in the future. So I think those were the ones that I thought needed the most clarification, but I'm happy to, to go through any more of them that any board members might have questions about.
As we page through this, is there any other, through the rest of these blocks? Because it is, there's a lot of information here, anything else that you feel?
Let me just see from leadership team, were there other members that had anything like Sloan had that they wanted to share for clarification that might be confusing to board members as, as they read it? Teresa, did you have anything?
Just if there are any questions about the identified assets, but I think that's all related to the youth survey and the information on the youth survey.
Okay, I see that. Well, I just want to make sure that we have everything from, and one clarification in the measures that you've put in here so far, these are measures that currently exist by and large.
Just speaking for the goal one area, most of these are measures that in some form are already in the existing strategic plan and that we've already reported information on. But we might be changing the format to provide more detailed and more actionable information to the board.
Okay, and about, and, and I guess the, the follow-up on the, on the other performance measures, are there any in here that you've stated that requires development of new assessments or is this pretty much what we have? In other words, there's data that is, that is attainable? Just before we get too far down in the weeds, unless there-
I can only speak for goal one, we're pretty good in the goal one area.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, it looks to me as though this is pretty much-
There, there are two that would still need to be developed. The one under desired outcome, it starts with the line, it's on page six, desired outcome 14 is the first column of it. The very last bullet that FCP, the objective is that FCPS will provide professional development that drives organizational improvement, and the measure of it, ratings of organizational performance in areas identified for strategic professional development, for example, cultural competence, that would need to be developed, it does not currently exist.
Okay.
And then there's also one under research, resource stewardship, which is on the very last page, on page eight, and it's also the last bullet. We don't currently calculate the investment of resources in the strategic plan, but that would be part of this whole process, so it would need to be developed, yes.
All right, thank you. That, just wanted to make sure-
Sloan, can you remind me, and the board I know probably already knows, performance targets, did they exist in the, in the current ignite plan?
No, they didn't, and I think that was one of the shortcomings of the current plan is that there was no target for the board to really measure the system's success against.
We have had, in years past, and in, in former iterations, we had targets, but this would give us targets. Okay, so yes, Mr. Smith?
And I think that, as we talk about the format again, that we look at that desired outcome as the bigger wish for the system, and then with the performance objective, it's that more intentional, and if you see the language even in the header line, it's what the division hopes to achieve, then that performance measure actually identifies what is being measured with the performance target then showing that growth from the baseline and where we establish what that growth should, should be.
Okay.
And when I say we, it's the collective we.
Right, okay, so I want to make sure before we dive back in, you all have presented any other clarifications or background that you think we might not be understanding? Okay, all right, we will go back. I have Evans Moon, Darren Akofax, McLachlan, and Corbett Sanders.
So I do appreciate that clarification, and it, it did answer a couple of my questions. Most of my previous comments were actually on this document, so I guess I jumped ahead. So I, I've made a lot of my comments about where, where I thought we should be going. Some of these, though, to Dr. Presidio's point, do seem quite familiar, and so I, I wonder if it would be helpful for us to know what already exists, because think, you know, some of these we already have.
Right, that was, that was why I asked that question.
Right, but I think it would be helpful for, for staff to go through and say, what, what do we already have? I mean, like, like, you know, well, percentage of students enrolled in Algebra One by grade eight, that's, that's a measure we already have, you know, and some, other of these things. And as far as that first bullet that Elizabeth was talking about, I don't think that's, I don't think that's-
We already use that.
We do that, no. So, and where is that? I mean, I guess it would be, I think it would be useful for us to know where, where, where is it now? You know, right? Where is it now?
Right. You're looking-
You know, where is it now?
You're looking for crosswalk between what's the objective and what's currently.
Right, where is it now, and what's brand-new, and what's an amended?
Yeah, and that's just to recap, that's why I said question, there only seem to be two measures that actually would have to be developed, but Dr. Prisidio, go back.
I think that's the next step, then, is to go through and tell us, not tonight, you know, we don't need to go through every one of these things.
But I think the answer was, they have all of this.
Somewhere.
These are all measures, data that have been reported to us in various other reports, so it's not newly-developed data.
Right, but you know, Tammy and I were just trying to figure out on that first one, do, you know, where is that now? Do we have that as a goal now? And now, okay, so you mean, do we have it as a goal now, or do we have the instrument that enables us to get the data? Right, I mean, is that someplace now?
Hey, Dr. Prisidio, go back in the universal screener and the beginning of kindergarten, what we test.
So if we're in column four, under performance objectives, looking at the very first objective there, all students will have experience prior to entering FCPS kindergarten that develop foundational literacy and numeracy skills. So that obviously is related, well, I shouldn't say obviously, that is related to the preschool experiences that students might bring in to FCPS. So on this particular measure of literacy and numeracy skills, we do have that data, that is our universal screener data, and what we were signaling here was trying to be more precise with what we were measuring, instead of just saying number of students that have a preschool experience, what was the quality of that experience as demonstrated by their literacy and numeracy skills that they come to us with?
Okay, so we don't currently have this as a goal, anywhere, is that true?
Right now, the language, and I'd have to get the original plan, which I'm happy to do, I can go back and get it, but mostly right now, what we're measuring is whether or not students had a preschool experience. We're not measuring their readiness when they come to us.
Okay, so I think we need a crosswalk where we show what of these, what of these is current, what do we already have and where is it, what is new, and, you know, or revised, what's brand-new and what's revised? Because I think we need to know what we already have in our strategic plan as a goal. So that's one thing I think.
Okay, wait, let me go back to so that I understand, because in other words, it's, your concern isn't that we don't have the tool, because we have the tools to measure this?
It's not about the tool, it's about.
Okay, that's fine, about whether or not is the current, what will the objective of this measure be?
What's our current goal? Got it. What's our current goal? And is this a revision, is each one of these a revision of it, or is it, I mean, like, the Algebra I, I recognize that because I always have a, I'm always a little, I'm in a minority on this, but I'm always a little skeptical about that one. So I recognize it, I think that's probably word-for-word what we currently have, so I'd like to know, that's word-for-word for what we already have.
I just want to clarify, are we talking about the, so what we have here that we're talking about now is what we used to refer to as the measures within the plan, the metrics and measures within the plan. So are you looking for some kind of a crosswalk that would crosswalk these measures with what we formerly or previously reported to the board on?
What we already have, what we already have.
What was already reported, or?
And what is already a goal in the strategic plan, what's already a goal, what's already an objective, what's already a measure, and what's brand-new and what's revised? Because I think we need to know where we're starting from scratch, and where we're not. And I've already made my comments on some of these. The only other one I would say, as a new comment, on the very last one, the desired outcome 35, when I first read this, I thought this was kind of in the category that Karen was talking about with, well, of course, we're going to advocate every year, maybe we don't need that, but then I look at the objective and the measurement, and really in a way that's kind of reversed, because our objective is to get more money, basically. And our strategy is to advocate. And I understand that this is a desired outcome, but it's really not the advocacy that's the outcome we're looking for. The outcome is more resources, correct? So I think we may need to reword that, or switch it, or, well, I'm looking at the desired outcome, our desired.
You're saying the desired outcome should be more resources, the strategy is better advocacy, and then we track it through the measures we listed?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Moon?
Just one comment and question, that has to do with the very first one, going back to prior to entering FCPS kindergarten. Do we agree that that's basically something that we do all want to be able to achieve, but at the present time, mostly out of our control?
No, I think this is a measure of the quality of the preschool experience that a student had coming in. So we know and we track whether or not a student enrolled in kindergarten and came from an FCPS preschool program, a county preschool program, a private preschool program, no preschool program. But what we haven't done in the past is actually measured their readiness when they start kindergarten. We hadn't really had an instrument, a valid instrument, to do that. And this year is the first year that we've been using.
So also, we set a performance target, whatever the number might be, whether 50 points, 50 points? I'm trying to understand what are action plans, what are actions we can embark upon to improve the quality of, for example, you know, private preschool programs? I mean, we have.
So there's going to be a myriad of actions that have to take place, and one of the shortcomings, I think, in our existing strategic plan, is the limited number of actions and the misalignment, well, really, lack of any type of alignment between the actions and the measures. So if you think about the format of our plan, we have the tables with the outcomes and the actions, and then down at the bottom, we have measures. This is an attempt to try to align our outcomes with our objectives and our measures and our targets, and it's recognizing that there's going to be the need for us as a leadership team and the board to work together, but we're not going to be able to enumerate every single action that we're going to take in a plan. That's just going to be too much information. So there are some things, using your example.
Yeah, I'm going to wait until we get to, actually, when we set the performance targets for this particular item, because I probably have a lot more questions at that point.
And that's an area where.
I think I'm going to, at least as one board member, have to acknowledge that there's a limitation as to what we can do when it comes to what the private sector is providing, how much control, how much enforcement power do we have? I mean, what we provide within FCPS, we do have a control, we do have a means to improve, but what can we do with the private sectors versus also some of those families who may choose not to send their kids, send their children outside their homes to do it?
So that's an area where, again, where the board can really own and lead the work of setting some of those performance targets, right? And that would be a great conversation to have. There are some things that we can do, using your example, working with community-based programs, there are some things that we can do and some things we're doing now, but the board might choose to set a performance target that is linked more towards the performance of FCPS preschool students as opposed to private preschool students.
And really focusing more on that expansion of preschool opportunities for students.
Not necessarily, I'm going to agree with that approach, but I'm going to wait until we set that target.
And next I have Ms. Darren Akofax. By the way, you know, we have a large committee that's kindergarten readiness, is a combination of FCPS and Office for Children, which is very robust and active. Ms. Darren Akofax?
I just want to mention also, just because you just said that, Janie, that, you know, the skip group is coming up with their own strategic plan for pre-K. So that will also, you know, that's a joint effort, and I'm assuming, you know, you're all, you're working under Francisco, so I know you're working with that and part of that, but I just wanted to remind my colleagues of that, that's happening, and we're going to be getting that, I think, at the next skip meeting, right, Megan? I think November, or December skip meeting, November's over, just about. So, and I appreciate the clarification, because I was having a real hard time with performance objectives, and I didn't see those words right there, I was jumping straight to the bullets. So when you pulled out opportunity, access, and attainment, I think that helps. And like, Mr. Moon, I'm not going to belabor a lot of this, because I think when we look to see the performance targets, I think that will help. But I am, and I understand and really appreciate, because you and I have had many conversations on equity, so I understand what you mean by comparable percentage of students by subgroup, and I guess until we see the performance targets, I'm not exactly what sure that, what that means. I mean, I kind of, I mean, I know what it means and why we want to state it that way. However, it's so varied from school to school, is it Fairfax County aggregate? Like, I'm not exactly certain how that's going to be, and I think that's going to be very, very complicated, and I, you know, I just, I don't expect you to even answer me now, but I am concerned about having that language there, and if we're not exactly sure what that means by school, by pyramid, by countywide, I'm not certain how we'll deal with that.
Well, there's lots of ways to measure things, right? So getting that specificity would be really important. Typically, what we've tried to provide in the reports to the board in the past is starting at the division level, and then on those particular measures where you want more region-specific information, pyramid-specific information, or school-specific information, providing that information along with the division-level information. But again, that's an area where the board could choose to set division-level targets or something else.
I just want to say, this is tough, but this is the equity conversation that I believe this board wants to have. Let me just take that earlier bullet, comparable percentages of students by subgroup with above-average aptitude will enroll in advanced mathematics. This is just saying, kids we've identified that have the aptitude should be taking the most rigorous mathematics courses made available. I mean, I think, and then how do you want to slice it? You can slice it every way, gender, race, socioeconomic status, there's a lot of pieces, but I think this is going to start to ask us, do we have women in our higher-level math courses throughout our county? Do we have our African-American and Hispanic kids taking the rigorous courses that we want them to be able to take to be college-ready? So I think it's, I mean, I admit, it's, but I, my feeling is still, this is going to help us dig a little deeper into the strategic plan to let the community and you have the transparency of, wow, this is happening or it's not happening, and it's not to blame, it's just to shed light. I think our equity discussion needs to be almost like a flashlight going, what do we want to focus on, go, how can we help make this better? How, it's not taking anything away from another kid, it's about giving more kids an opportunity to try to have either opportunity, access, and finally, achievement. And honestly, what I like, too, is I think we pounded achievement, 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 this plan's trying to back it down a little bit more, backwards map it, well, let's go back to the beginning. And some of you, as board members, have said, do we have these programs? Then if we have these programs, are the kids that we need getting in these programs? So I think it's going to have a healthy, robust discussion, in some ways, it's going to be more work and more conversation, but I think it's going to drive us to a level of detail and a level of performance targets that's going to make us more accountable. So I appreciate your conversations tonight.
I appreciate that, I have a few more comments and questions. So, Ms. Evans talked about the crosswalk, I think that's important, because, again, with us not having the day-to-day experience with it and just kind of occasionally looking at it, I think some things here were, well, I guess, I'm not going to assume anything. So the performance objectives, I'm assuming some of them, and maybe my colleagues ask this question, some of them, you know, we're currently doing, some of them, we're refining a little bit, some of them are new, like, I know, we talked about, like, let's take the capstone one, that's new, that's new. Okay, because.
Yeah, we heard you loud and clear, some of these measures, we're going to have to figure out a way to either bold the ones that were in before, or italicize those that are new. Sloan, or Marty, do you want to add to that?
Go ahead, Marty. What's new is actually the measure, and so as we think about the previous plan, we talked about ensuring that we had capstone projects, but in terms of that measurement, it wasn't aligned to the work in the plan, so we didn't necessarily report out to the board information related to specific actions within the plan. So I think that with this new process, we're going to actually give you information that's aligned to the work that we're doing in the system, that's better aligned.
And I think that's important, because the capstone idea, I remember strongly advocating it for in certain grades, not certain, you know, that was one of the things that I have talked about off and on through the last few years. So when I saw that there, I was just, you know, curious, like, how, and I appreciate that, because I know you're all working really, really hard. It is, this is a hard process we're going through, and I think, I think it would be helpful, like I said, it was very helpful to me, because I kind of was lost a little bit when I saw the three words, opportunity, access, attainment, that was good, and then just, maybe it's just a little bit, this is a new format, and I think maybe the crosswalk will help, and Marty, I know what you said, too, this isn't the strategic plan, it's kind of a working document that's taking pieces, and it's our work plan to get to, but, but, but at the same time, it's a little hard for us at this point, as you're hearing, and I hope you're not hearing criticism, it's more like, it's just a little hard.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that people didn't walk away thinking that this was the plan, so I'm not hearing criticism at all.
And Sloan, you wanted to say something?
Well, just real fast, I was going to say, taking the capstone, this is a good example of something that was in the strategic plan, but wasn't highlighted as a priority, there were no performance targets for it, and as the goal champion for goal one, it's hard for me to figure out how much to push on that and how much to prioritize that piece of work, right? So ultimately, it may be something that the board chooses to pull out, but if we're really going to get to Portrait of a Graduate, we need to prioritize things like the capstone experience in a way that it's clear to me that it's a priority, that I need to be accountable for leading that work, and it's clear to the schools that that's a priority for our school system to be doing that work.
So can I be real with the board, can I just add to that? So that's the back-and-forth that I've done with leadership team. Oh, Portrait of a Graduate, where is it? Well, we're saying we're doing capstone. Well, where are we doing it? What schools? The strategic plan doesn't tell us? Sloan, you've got people working on capstone, well, what are they doing? We've got people in the organization working on something, but we're not measuring it, and we're saying it's one of the key priorities of, so it's honestly, we're trying to tighten up the accountability on us to show to you, wow, okay, you got five people working on this across schools, and more and more schools have it, where are we going to be by 2020 with capstone projects? And who's doing them in our schools? So I do think, once we get through this transition and clean up and go back to the original desired outcome language, and you all had a few other tweaks, but a lot of it was there, we're going to, I'm hopeful, and then put the measurements in that we have, that we already had, and then let you more clearly see the new ones, we're actually going to be closer, I feel like there'll be more consensus from the board with that refreshed document, and we can work to find a time to get it to you sooner than later to keep the momentum around this going forward.
Okay, I have McLoughlin, Corbett Sanders, Polchek, Heinz, Moon. McLoughlin?
So I'm going to try to go high-level again. I know I asked as a process question, and the more I listen, the more alarmed I am. So I'm going to go back to Arlington again. Arlington's plan is crystal clear. Here's your goal, here's your strategy, here's the desired outcome, and here's your data sources to see how you know whether or not you're getting to your desired outcome. This document here does not have the strategies, so you're asking this board to give you and LT feedback, but follow me here, everybody, if you look at, here's your outcome, then we're going to go with performance objective, what we hope to achieve, and then we're going to measure and have targets. The key column in the middle that is not here, that honestly should never have been brought to us to even have a pinch of an opinion on, is the strategy part, because your strategy is then what you're going to end up measuring. Your strategy is to do something, and then you have to measure if the strategy is actually accomplishing what you want. So without a strategy listed here in any of this, I can't even comment logically if your measure makes sense, because I don't know what your strategy is to create this outcome. So when you look at, let's see, I'm trying to follow these numbers here. So I'll, when you look at, let's see, I'm trying to follow these numbers here. Guess it'd be page seven. If you go under the top of the page, promote student-employee well-being. Well, and, um, student-employee well-being. So then you go to the performance objective. Interestingly, there's five different things that we have performance objectives for students, and we have one throwaway for employees. So, you know, if we think it's important, so staff will use health and wellness resources. Then go to performance measure, percentage of staff who, A, I assume that's supposed to be, who use a health and wellness resource. Well, what, what was the strategy that you're going to actually use to get them to use these resources? And then who's to actually say that if they use our resources, there's a causality versus a correlation effect? That the strategy to get them to use these resources, and then the percentage that uses those resources made them better in their well-being? There's no measure here that's saying, how are we going to actually assess whether their well-being has improved or not? Is it how they report, how they feel about their, their job? I mean, at least with students, we were looking at percentage that report feelings of depression, stress, and suicidal ideation. From the suicide, well, do we survey our employees? I mean, so it almost seems incomplete, but interestingly, in the one right below it as well, if you look at enhanced competitive employment practices. Under performance objective, the percentage of teachers hired will reflect the gender and ethnicity percentage of the applicant pool. And then you read over and it says percentage of teachers hired by gender and ethnicity. So your objective and your measure almost read like the same wording. And that happens in a couple of times, the page before, when, when we were talking about the equip staff with knowledge and tools, so it's page six. But I'm equipped staff with knowledge and tools for fulfilling individual and organizational improvement needs. FCPS will provide the development that, professional development that drives organizational improvement. Well, that would be your strategy, not your objective. And then the measure was ratings of organizational performance in areas identified for strategic professional development. I don't even actually know what that bullet is saying. So I guess I would just say, again, at a very high level, the absence of strategy being on here makes it difficult for us to, I think, actually give logical, meaningful input for tonight. When I think about capstone, that's exciting. But Dr. Braybrand, if anything were more in the weeds, that would be that. If this board is going to have a strategic plan and dialogue with you, and we're going to drill all the way down to you report back to us about how we're doing on our capstone delivery, I will again venture back that it was more important for me as a board member to say, K-12, how is our grading, reporting, reflecting student achievement? Than whether or not I get to know how we're doing on a capstone delivery. Because I actually think that's more highly specified. And that would be for you, as a superintendent, feel like, okay, we're doing a lot of different things. But at this board doesn't need to be able to go to the, to the granular of how are we doing on capstone delivery? So when you mentioned earlier that a lot of work has gone into this, I, I say this with great humility, I'm not an expert on strategic plan. I can look at Arlington's as a parent and as a board member, and it makes sense to me. Everything we've seen today, I think, is more confusing than where we were. And I would say that since I'm not an expert on it, but I know it reads logical and what doesn't, maybe it might be helpful to have. Your, your LT team has worked on this obviously very hard. But I don't necessarily know that their PhDs had them trained to do a strategic plan. And I'm not asking them to do something they weren't subject matter experts in. But I think you need a subject matter expert to come in and look at this strategic, the draft of this plan before it comes back to the board. Because essentially, now this has been multiple work sessions where it's a lot of staff time, a lot of our time and your time. And I'm a little worried that we're actually not in a better position for it. And I know you want us to be successful with it. We all want to be successful with it. But I feel really badly about tonight, only because I want to be cheerleader on this one. But I feel like I have to, to be honest, I'm really worried about what I see. And I don't think this is where you want it to be either.
It's Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Many of you know Simon Winnick and his, the why. Why are we doing this? And that's really the gist of a strategic plan, the why. And so I think that there is actually quite a bit in here. And it has, especially with the objectives and the measures, we are moving in the right direction. I do agree, Megan, that having a clearer linkage to the strategies that are laid out in the strategic plan are important and ignite. They're put there slightly with being in the perennas under each one. But having that broken out would be helpful. I actually am going to go a little, in a little different direction, which is, you mentioned earlier, Marty, that, you know, the question is whether or not, or maybe it was you, Sloan, whether or not we look at metrics at a county level or at a pyramid level or perhaps a school level. I would say that we have had an overabundance or an overreliance on county-level measures. And when we have county-level measures, we actually mask what is happening with our subgroups that are, and if we are serious about this, then we have to be willing to peel back the onion and go to a much more granular level that would not only look at various subgroups, but all the way down to various regions. Because we do have, in many cases, a tale of two counties that gets masked when we have county-level objectives. The second thing that I would urge is that when we define our objectives, we have to do it from the standpoint of what's the relevance to student outcomes? Because at the end of the day, the only thing that matters, the only thing that will make us successful or not successful is how our actions impact student outcomes. And that goes to everything from air objectives as far as bridging the achievement gap. But it also deals with how we treat our employees. That if we do not treat our employees in a fair, equitable, and professional manner, then that will impact student outcomes. So when we look at our measures, it should always go back to how we measure ourselves. How does that positively or negatively impact student outcomes? And I don't think that we're very clear on that in parts of this document. So I would also urge that we look at things. For example, we talk about literacy, numeracy, access to advanced courses. But we don't go down to the level of dealing with, are there advanced courses available in each of our elementary, middle, and high schools? When we look at Thomas Jefferson's enrollment, is that an enrollment that reflects the diversity of the county? And both and the geographic diversity of the county? Because today, we don't necessarily have that. When we look at our outcomes for students, are we creating, are we ensuring that there are CTE, that there's equitable CTE offerings across the county versus just concentrating in certain areas? And are those CTE offerings as diverse or appropriate to, you know, for example, are, do we have the STEAM offerings everywhere? Or is it only limited to a couple of areas? And so I would just urge that we get much more granular to the level of, why are we doing it? And when measuring it, are we measuring it so that it actually helps us be laser-focused on the equity piece and student outcomes and achievement?
It's Paul Check.
Thank you. I guess we seem to be, I appreciate this conversation. I agree, Dr. Braybrand, I think it's important. We're in a few different places. So originally, when I signed up to speak, I wanted to ask a few specific questions. So I hope that's okay. And I really, I think, and I just want to say, I think the most important thing about this, and I understand what Ms. McLaughlin's saying, and I've, I've looked over the Arlington Strategic Plan. I think there are some things they do well. I think in some areas, they lock the same thing ours was lacking, which is measurements that are attached to each action item that are then, you know, all toward the strategy, a target for a desired outcome. And hopefully, the, the, the steps within those is to go from measurements to action. So I think it's okay that we're in this kind of flux phase and, and we're trying to improve it. And I, what I like the most about this is that we do have a measurement for every single one. We can agree or disagree whether they're the right measurements or whether we need to shift them or create new ones. But I truly, truly appreciate that we now are able to have performance measurements, like assessments of every single one. I guess a, a few questions I have, and maybe I'll start at the beginning, I believe on page five. And I'll, I'll just go through and ask my questions. In the second bullet on column five, when we're talking about, and this throughout, when we're talking about numbers, number of performance of basement, of assessments, percentage of capstone experiences. I guess my question is, do you feel, and Sloan, Dr. Presidio, that we really do want to just focus on numbers? Are we able to look at quality or goals that might be more aligned with what the outcome truly is?
Yeah, so that's, that's a really good question. I, I think this work is still new enough, that it's evolving. And what we're kind of signaling here is the first place where we can get some baseline measurement, right? Which is, how many schools are doing it? And how many are we offering, right? And we have been working to really think about, how, how are we going to use the scores on these assessments to really reflect on the quality of the experiences, learning experiences that students have and the skills and content mastery that's happening in those classes? So we will evolve to the point where I actually really believe that we would be able to, be able to provide not, kind of similar to what we used to do with the Global Awareness Technology Project, if you will, because that's a performance-based assessment. You could also kind of say it's a capstone assessment at the fifth grade. But we would be able to present score information to the board in a reliable and valid way. But right now, with capstones, we just have so few schools that are doing them, we can't really do that. We can show you what the scores are, right? But I don't think we would want to use those scores for accountability purposes. It would be more at this point for kind of information.
So can we assume then that a little bit like the, the steps and, and in what we want to focus on now in the future, can we assume the same for measurements? That this is what we have here, these are what we want to start with? It's not necessarily the same measurements that we'll be using the next two, three, five, 10 years?
Yeah, I mean, I think when we do the annual reports to the board, that's the data in context that, you know, the board has been asking us to have those conversations so we can share the information. The board can signal where we have growth areas. We can have a conversation about where we need to go next, how we need to adjust those targets for the next year. Particularly with areas like this, that, well, they're not brand-new, we're not doing them at scale in the division. I don't think to be able to use the outcome attainment information the way that we would really want to.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Because in the end, we really want to get not just to a performance, but to, and a little bit across-the-board proficiency standards, right? This is, this is the outcome, the proficiency we hope students will have in every high school at 12th grade or at every area.
And just on capstones, we have again, in, when you go to page six in the attainment section, we do have scores for capstones. I'm pointing that one out just to say that again, that's really going to be more for informational purposes at the beginning because we just don't have everybody doing it yet.
Okay. And, and, and we can assume that they, we will, even though we'll be, they will be hopefully spread soon to all schools, the standards will still be a county-wide sort of rubric or scoring standard.
Yep, absolutely. We want to use common rubrics. We want to be able to, you know, provide training to teachers so that they can score things with reliability and inter-rater reliability.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. No, I appreciate that.
I mean, we've talked about sampling things at the division level so we can ensure inter-rater reliability.
Okay, so yeah, I think as long as that, that is our goal. And also on a yearly basis, that, you know, with staff, you know, we don't have to review every measurement, every action, and every outcome. But that this will continue to be that live document.
And I think that's an important point. I know that we've said it several times, but I, I think, you know, the leadership team has really lived this for the last several months, thinking about this. And the board hasn't, you know, had an opportunity to have as much dialogue about it. Again, this is just a snapshot of what's in that strategic plan. So when you think about it and you kind of pull out and take that 30,000 view look at what our current strategic plan is, we have four goals. Each goal has several strategy areas. And then we get into the information here that's kind of value-added on top of that in terms of what are the performance objectives? What are the measurements and what are the targets? That's the piece that's been lacking. Because if you look at the current plan, just taking goal one, student success, it has four strategy areas. Okay, one is around instruction, one's around assessment, one's around pre-K, and one is around college and career readiness. You're not seeing college and career readiness in here because the board and the leadership team hadn't prioritized the associated outcomes with that. But it doesn't mean that that's still not in the plan and work isn't happening there. So I just think it's hard, it's kind of back to the, you know, the comments about maybe seeing a crosswalk between the two plans so you can see what's kind of come over and what hasn't come over.
Okay, yeah, no, that's helpful. And, and for you to say that last point, because I think it's important that we have, and I totally agree with the measurement for kindergarten readiness being more about the skills that students are coming in with rather than have they had an opportunity. And, and I guess from what I've, the research, limited research I've had, is that after that point, we need to start looking at, right, the third grade and fifth grade and ensure that it continues to stay on target. So I assume those will come along as we get the kindergarten.
And that, and again, that's data that we've reported to the board in past presentations and updates on the strategic plan. We can continue to do it. You're not seeing it in here because we were signaling, again, fewer measures to look at to be able to have more in-depth dialogue and conversation with the board. But that's where if the board wants more of those measures put in here, obviously, that's something we can do. But again, this is the alignment to those prioritized outcomes with select measures identified to support those. It doesn't mean that this is everything that we would measure in the system. Of course, it's not.
Right, no, I appreciate that. And so I, I agree that these are, measurements are definitely going in the right direction. Not to take up too much time. My next questions are really more, I guess, around the HR, our employees and our student health for Dr. Ramey and Dr. Johnson. I guess my first question, looking on page seven, column four, where we've combined student and employee well-being. First of all, I guess my overall arching question, and I apologize if someone has asked this, is do we feel, do you feel that this is a best practice to combine them into the same category for students and employees? And secondly, from my reading it, most of the performance objectives are negative. So what we do not want to see, what will not happen? And I guess I was just curious about that, as to why we decided on that? And if we could, you know, enlighten us and maybe give us some more information as we look at those.
Well, I'll speak to some of the objectives that you were talking about as far as the student wellness piece of it's concerned. I think we were looking at the first object, that, that measured outcome has to do with assets. So those assets are the protective factors. So we're good, we're looking for a more positive way that we can measure students and their, and their development. And I think we were looking at having a reliable number, at least that students are reporting out. So in addition to having the student self-reported information on that anonymous survey, also having the discipline piece of it that comes out of our county data, out of our student information system so that we can compare those numbers. In addition, that last one about chronic absenteeism, that is something the state is focusing on. And we wanted to switch from what's been reported as daily average attendance into the chronic absenteeism. That'll give us a, a more reliable measure of our students that are missing school, whether it be excused or unexcused.
Okay.
So then, in terms of, of the, of the combination, the, really some of the language on the final desired outcome or the recommended really was a benefit to staff to include it in those areas of well-being. That's language that is pretty similar to the, one of the main ones for staff in caring culture. FCPS staff will be encouraged and supported in making healthy life choices. The other piece of this is as we prioritize the work and try to look at the overlap from our department.
The other piece of this is, as we prioritize the work and try to look at the overlap from our departments, quite frankly, the work we're doing around recruitment and hiring was of a higher priority for the work that I'm doing out of my team. And so as I had to make those tough choices about how we prioritize some of the work inside my department, some of the things in goal three, excuse me, rose a little bit higher on our list. And so seeing an opportunity to combine these as we kind of strategized was a benefit for us from a perspective of getting more into the plan or into what we're looking at, the priorities for our staff. So it was kind of a combination of a carryover from some of the exact language from the original plan in terms of for employees inside goal two, but then also looking how it fell out in the work that we had prioritized as well.
Okay, yeah, so, um, maybe just for further conversation, I understand the priorities. It just was a little confusing if this is really the most effective way. Um, if we had the resources to do it, would we do it the same way? Um, so maybe I would just love to, to get more in depth on that at some point. And then, um, yeah, on the student objectives, and maybe that is more of a conversation, is I, I understand those measurements, and maybe it's the, okay, these are the kind of, the easy measurements that we can really look at reliably. Um, but perhaps you can start to look at more, right, the, um, in the schools, you know, the outcome of supporting students who go through the SOS screening and, right, kind of starting to get more the helping students come out of not just the out, not just the outcome, not misusing substances, but before that, the, the, the positive building strategies. I think it's great to have the resiliency, but, um, I don't know, I would like to just maybe think about how we can have, um, measurements that maybe are, are a combination of quantitative, qualitative, that we can, um, look at a, a wider picture that's more toward the goal, rather than getting away from what we don't want. Um, and then, um, for Chase on the next one, on performance measurements for employee retention, um, I don't see anything on here about exit interviews, and I don't know if you had looked at that, or if we could combine that with just the retention rate and also
Sure.
the, the length of retention was my question.
I think that some of that goes to what Ms. McLaughlin was saying, when we talk about the strategies or other pieces that we're going to look at, it's that next level underneath there. And those pieces, like the exit interviews, feed up into that. And so as we looked at where we were in the current strategic plan and then the conversations we'd had around the LT, uh, table, but also on the board table, what the board was interested in looking at, looking at more retention more globally and not just feeding in from the exit survey, um, or something like that. And so that would be something that we would continue to work on. And we'll actually talk about that next week when I do the current goal three report. And so it's not going away, but it's really, as we've talked about where it's embedded, as some of those strategies that we'll utilize to start measuring some of these other pieces.
No, I appreciate that. Um, and I guess for me, that the main suggestion, hope I would have is for all of these, um, is that I think we've, we've identified some clear um, quantitative measurements for these, um, Scott. And I would just love for us to start to maybe look at in the different categories. Where can we find ways, um, you know, for common measurements across schools to look beyond just these, you know, kind of numbers that, that are a good starting point? Um, but if we can start to identify measurements that maybe go a little bit beyond, um, you know, just out of context sometimes, numbers, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, if you have specific ideas, we'll, we'll certainly be open to them for follow-up.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then finally, for the last one, um, you know, we can have different ideas of communication advocacy programs. I think they go hand in hand. Um, and so I fully support both improving our external community communications, um, from local, state, even federal, um, and looking at what that means for an advocacy program. Um, and, and I agree with Ms. Jarnet Kofax that whatever number that was, 22, 23, that was not included from the other document, um, 32, sorry. The decision-making framework, I have heard that quite a bit, and I think that is something that community also has asked for, um, as we do that. So thank you, I think this is a, a great place to be.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so just a, a few things. I think, um, Dr. Presidio, you reminded me that we have had data on that sort of longitudinal look related to preschool, right? Where I think we were asking parents, where was your child before they came here? So that was some baseline data. And even though it's not probably, um, pristine data, right, because it's self-reported, um, still, I think generally probably helpful. Um, and then, and then to, you know, follow those kids through our system for a while. See, I find that extremely helpful, because we do know that in the national data, there's often a falloff after preschool to third grade, you know? Um, and I think, Mr. Moon, to your point, that we don't control what happens before they get here, it's true. But I think as the public school system in the community, we have a lot of influence over what happens before kids get here. And we leverage that influence, as Tammy was saying, on the skip committee. And, uh, there's a lot of other organizations, um, that we work with in the community. And a lot of them are, you know, private providers who get training and they're all, you know. So anyway, it, it's kind of a team effort out there to make sure the kids get what they need, and we're a big partner in that. So that's why I think that's very important. Um, on, um...
Ms. Heinz, if I could just, as another reminder to the board, and I should have said this earlier, remember that we also, with respect to longitudinal pre-K study, we're working with the University of Virginia, and we're in year two of a four-year study to really track the impact of early childhood, pre-K education on, um, student performance up through grade three. So we're looking at students right now in first grade, so.
Thank you, that had slipped my mind.
So that's a comprehensive report that the board will continue to get updates annually.
Wonderful. Um, on page six, at the bottom there, the desired outcome, uh, cultural competency. If we did decide to make a change here and go back to cultural competency and away from the more general, um, you know, good and great PD, right? Um, then I assume that these measures, this whole, um, row would change. Is that right, in terms of what we'd be asking the school system to, to measure and report out? Because we don't need to hear all employees will achieve the professional goals identified in their individual learning plans. I'm, I'm sure that's being done. Okay, because I, to me, for you to report on all that other data is not getting to the, the point.
From my perspective, I think there's a couple of different approaches. If, if we were to keep the original desired outcome, then we would need to change the targets and the measures and everything to be more closely aligned just with cultural competency. Of course, the reason we made this switch was because we knew that there were other priorities with respect to professional development. So if we wanted to maintain the approach that's here, but have a greater, um, lens on, on cultural competency, if you would, then we need to change some of the measures and some of the targets and some of the objectives.
Well, and I, I mean, you know, for, for my money, personally, I, I, I I assume that all that other, you know, professional development, I don't hear from the, the field, you know, that there's, that professional development is not what people want, and it's a waste of, you know, you used to hear that kind of thing, right? But I, I feel like it's gotten better, I could be wrong. We continue, our employee associations continue to do surveys and find out how people feel about it, and as do we. Um, so, I don't know, just my, and I'm just one board member, but I, I, you could narrow that for me in terms of what would be in the strategic plan and worthy of strategic reporting. Um, so, and just the last thing I would say is, um, that I think, um, these, you know, these measures related to equity, I'm very glad to see all this, all these bullets related to students and student achievement and outcomes. And not only outcomes, but performance measures. This is stuff we haven't seen before. And, um, I think as, you know, with the one Fairfax resolution, and when we actually, um, are going to start publishing some sort of equity scorecard publicly on our website, um, this is the kind of stuff that should be there. And to me, kind of the more information you have, the better. I remember when I, I talked to Karen Garza about it a few times, she would say, well, once you put those outcomes out there, then what? What do you do? Don't you just, don't you just give yourself a black eye if, if you're not doing anything about it? But I, I don't want to speak for her, but that was kind of the fear, right? Is that you put data out there that, that isn't up to your measure, then what do you do? Well, to me, every time we, we look at data, it's like when we, um, did the assessment of the math program, right? A lot of that data was kind of, uh, you know, wow, this is not so great, we're not really, you know. But we used it as a formative assessment, as an opportunity to look at the data, figure out why and where and how to get better. That's why you do it, right?
If I just could add on that, and I know we're wrapping up at time. If I could do one thing in my legacy here, coming back, is to create the culture where we're saying, we're not cat three in everything, which I shared with the entire school division in August, right? We want to be DaVinci, we want to be the best, but where we're not, we admit it, and then we work together collaboratively, right? Part of why it's not maybe been put forward is what will people do with it? How will they use it? And we will have to model, I believe, those conversations around equity to go, of course we've fallen short, we've talked about achievement gaps for decades. So we, we don't want to, we're not going to serve up some false plate of information that says it's all perfect. But how do we start to say, how can we make it better and do it through a partnership? If we model that, I believe our community will start to see it as something that can bring us together and not pull us apart. And we have to have faith, we have to have faith that bringing the information forward will actually strengthen community and have people who want to step up and go, how do we solve these problems together? Versus, oh my gosh, this is an issue, I gotta get, I've, I've got to be somewhere else. The truth is, these equity issues are in every single school system in this country. Some are going to have the courage to put it forward and do something about it, and others are going to, uh, not do that, and we're going to have the same old, same old, same old. I don't believe that you hired me to do that. I feel the conversation tonight, it helped us well. We didn't bring, we didn't bring you a cat three, but I don't think it was a cat one either. We got a couple of things, several things that are going to help us better when we bring it back to you. And I think we'll get closer, um, before much more of this year is out to bring you something that's going to really help drive us over the next year or two. So thank you.
I would just say thank you. This is, it's an iterative process, we know that, and I think we're making progress.
Okay, Mr. Moon, and then I will share my comments.
As a partial response to, uh, a comment made by Ms. Heinz on the preschool, uh, measures we'll be collecting or preschool objectives, that we do have a lot of influence on what the private sectors do or even what the families provide at home. I mean, I do agree, and we need to, eh, take advantage of that, that we do have that influence to make some differences or to, eh, eh, to cause improvements in, even in private sectors and, you know, homeschooling. But at the same time, I don't want to be in a situation where we do set of targets that we know mostly to beyond our control, that we end up failing meeting. You know, for example, I mean, I'm not saying that that's the, uh, that's the target this step is going to propose. If we have a target, uh, for that particular item where that a, a children coming out of private sector preschool program will show 5% increase in numeracy and literacy every year for next five years, is that really something we can achieve? I mean, that's the kind of question I think we need to get to. I mean, what can we realistically be able to achieve? That's where my comment was supposed to be addressed to, okay? Having said that, I do have a couple of very deep, specific questions, if you don't mind, uh, Dr. Presidio. I am looking at page number five, uh, second block, access. The first bullet, second line, second line, it has magic language in my mind. Above-average aptitude, which you don't see in the next bullet, which you don't see on the next bullet, but you put that above, above-average aptitude just for the first bullet. So my question to you is this. Do you consider, Dr. Presidio, students taking calculus, whether it's A, B, or C in senior year, is that student in advanced math? Or is that just average math in your mind?
I, I would say it's neither average or advanced. It, it is calculus is what it is. Because very specifically, what we're referring to in the bullet that you point out is at the elementary grade level, we have an advanced math program, and we use some of our screening assessments, like the COGAT, to be able to indicate students that should be able to be successful in an accelerated mathematics program of study. But we have not been successful in all instances in getting those students enrolled in advanced math. And that is work that we still need to do as a school system. So what we're saying here is that those students that we've identified on those standardized assessments of having above-average aptitude that should be challenged in an advanced math course of study in grades three through six, that's, that's what we're targeting with that bullet.
Okay, so, uh, I think you'll probably need to educate me on this one. In a third-grade class, if a one particular student is identified to have above-average aptitude, then that student would have a differentiated instruction for the math in...
So now, so now you're getting into some of the nuances and challenges of ensuring that all of our students get advanced math, because...
Let me finish my question.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and, and if the student continues in the advanced math, three, four, five, six, by the time the student enters, maybe even entering sixth grade or seventh grade in higher-level math than other students? For example, one could be in Algebra I in sixth grade or seventh grade versus regular sixth-grade math or regular seventh-grade math? Is that, is that, is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, so essentially, if, if you are in the advanced math program, starting in grade three, you are in accelerated math, which is going to lead you to an accelerated middle school course of studies in math and an accelerated course of studies at high school in math.
So if, if a student was taking Algebra I in eighth grade, because we have that as an objective, right? One of the objectives, eh, taking Algebra I in eighth, do you think that's a result of someone's having been in advanced math program from third grade and on?
Well, mostly what you're going to find backwards mapping from your example is students that are in calculus, multivariate calculus, right? Whatever those courses might be at the high school level, most of those students obviously started in advanced math at elementary. Not only, right, there are, there are opportunities to enter and access advanced math at other points in time, but the reality is, not many students are able to do that successfully, which is why we need to start our pipeline early at third grade and make sure that we have equitable access and opportunity there.
Now I'm going to go back to my very same first question. We see that above-average aptitude for the first bullet, why not putting the same averag, average aptitude in the second bullet? If this is for the students who are taking Algebra I by eighth? Because what I'm trying to get at is this. Whether by putting that above-average aptitude in the first bullet, are we gonna be saying later on, say that when the actual data me, me, measures that we see come out that certain ethnic group has lower percentage of students in advanced math, are we gonna say that because that group overall showed lower aptitude? That is why showed smaller percentage of students from that group in the advanced math? You know, I'm, what I'm trying to get at?
I do, and I think it's a, I think it's a really important question. The, the reason that we've chosen to put above-average aptitude for the fir, first bullet is because that was part of the advanced math study that, um, Lady's Office led. And we were able through that study to determine that we have an instrument that could identify students that have the aptitude to start advanced math studies early at third grade. So that's the only reason that particular language is in there. Um, we could remove that language, we could, I, I think that would be the better...
I'm not asking you to remove, I'm just want you to give some thought. Because one could easily use that as a way out of explaining certain things. I'm not saying we shouldn't be, you know, doing that either, but I just want you... By just having the language just in the bullet,
Right.
questions could arise. Why it is there, but not for eighth-grade Algebra I or even AP college-level courses, we didn't put that in? You know, somebody, you know, some students could have above-average science aptitude to take college-level science... to take college-level science courses. We didn't put that, but just in the particular bullet we did. So, I have that question, I hope the staff could give them, give some thought.
Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, I will wrap this up, because it's now ten after nine. I'll let you go now.
I just, I just want to take a point, because I started off this conversation, I'm still there, and I'm sorry, I don't know that it does us any good, it doesn't help you, Dr. Brabran, to say, well, I just love having all these bullets, or that, you know, we want to see things about students on here, if, if it isn't meaningful. And I'm going to give you a couple of examples. One that is excellent, on page seven, in the, in four and five, the percentage of teachers hi- no, I'm sorry, I'll come back to that one, right below it. FCPS will maintain employee retention rates at or above state and national averages. And then, the measurement for that, although we don't have, Ms. McGloughlin's correct, we don't have any strategies, is the retention rate by position and type for administrative, instructional, and support. That's very clear. It's extremely clear what you want to do, and it's extremely clear how you're going to measure it. The one right above it, that I led in with, the percentage of teachers hired will reflect the gender and ethnicity percentages of the applicant pool, which ties into the one above it that says, FCPS applicant pool will improve. Will improve how? What? Where? What do you, what do you mean it will improve? How we, because going across, it says, number of applicants for difficult-to-fill positions. I don't, I don't even know what that means. That, that there's no clarity there, and there's no correlation. We can't, unless you tell me what it is that you want to do to the applicant pool. Are we going to grow our applicant pool by 15%? Are we going to go and recruit? Are we going to spend money to recruit in other states that we aren't currently recruiting in? I mean, what's going to change about the applicant pool? And then, we can't, we're not in control of who we hire, because as we all know at this table, you, you can offer somebody a job, and they might not take the job. You don't have control over, over whether or not, so, is the question, is the measurement, what we're going to do with the applicant pool? Is it who we're going to offer jobs to? Is it how we're going to find people to offer jobs to? I mean, this, this is where it gets very murky very quickly, because the, there's not a correlation. And then you go to the block above it. Students will not misuse substances. And then, the measurement is the percentage of students who report on a substance misuse survey. There's no correlation for that, for the misuse of substances, and then the discipline for the misuse of substances. The, they will not, will not, FCPS students will not feel depressed, stressed, or suicidal. We're tying everything to a youth survey that's opt, that's opt-out, and that's only offered at certain grades, and that, I can tell you, the kids tell us they're lying all the time. So I, I, I don't understand any of these correlations. So these are the types of things that, when you all were sitting and spending a lot of time in LT, and looking at, somebody should have said, what does this mean? What is, what does it mean that we're going to say, all students will not, FCPS students will not misuse substances, and that our measurement is going to be responses on the county's youth survey? There is a major disconnect there, and I'm not being unkind, I'm actually, this is actually, this will help us do better. I'll flip it over to page eight at the top, where it says, per pupil funding will increase. There are, I, I could pull, you know, statistics galore, that the more money you spend on a student does not translate to student achievement. And we can go right across to Washington DC, and I can show you the highest per capita spending on a per-student basis, and what does that have to do with student achievement? Or what does that have to do with teacher retention? So, the correlation that we're going to, we're going to get more per-pupil funding to, to get that to increase, that's why there's a frustration about whether or not this is strategic. You know, going back to the very first thing that I was saying, and Dr. Lockard, you may have been the one that said it, the, the second bullet on page five, under column five, it isn't that it's the number of performance-based, and I'm sorry, maybe it was Dr. Presidio, it's not the number, we need to develop, that's the operative word, we need to develop specific assessments to replace the state standardized. The development is the, but it's not, that's not really even the performance measure, that's actually, that's something we have to do, you know? So, that's why Ms. McGloughlin is correct on some of this, you know, is it the enrolled versus achievement? Is it, that, that's where I think, you know, honestly, stepping back from this, I, I don't want to throw out there that I think we ought to start over again, but I sort of kind of do. I sort of kind of want to feel like, we're not in a place, this document does not make me comfortable at all, that we're in a place to move forward. It doesn't mean that the work that's been done isn't worthy. The work is worthy, and the information that can be garnered from the work that's been done to date is, is, is useful information, but translating that into a strategic document to help you narrow down, which you definitely knew, I mean, you knew coming in the door, that, hey, we got to whittle this thing down to focus, because you guys have got us, you know, spread all across the, the twister board, and we got to pick, you know, we can't do all the colors, we got to do a couple of the colors and a couple of the dots on a per couple-of-year basis, to strategically focus where the staff is spending the time, where you're going to direct money in the budget. This isn't that. And, and, and that isn't, that, that isn't meant to be a criticism, that is meant to be an honest assessment of where we are with where, where I think we should be, and how do we move this forward? And I, I, I'm just wondering if we don't bring somebody in, get you additional, you know, I don't know, strategic plan help or something, but there's a disconnect between where we are, and I think the next step, and it's, that helps to have the conversation, it doesn't hurt.
Okay, I think we need to wrap this up. I will share my comments at the end. Under the, under the first outcomes on student achievement, I very much like the concept of breaking out opportunity access and attainment, because I think that that really gets at the equity issue. And we've never done this before, and I think that this is definitely a step in the right direction, and I think will give us greater focus on, on what it is that we really need to do. I'm pleased to see the capstone projects, because I think that's a, a part of project-based learning, and it gives us the opportunity to actually bring all the, the portrait of graduate outcomes we would like to see. One question that I have, that I, in student wellness piece, and I understand that we're using the data from the Student Risk Survey, from our own discipline survey, in other words, from the, the, and also the, the states, which I think is actually good, emphasis on chronic absentee, whether it's excused or unexcused, because we have issues with both. One of the questions, I think it's in some of the surveys, it talks about how safe students feel at school, and I don't know whether or not we would want to use that as, as any kind of a measure and indicator. I think that it is on the, the survey, because I know that we've used that before. That is just simply a suggestion. Another sort of super out-of-the-blocks, and we've talked about this one before, is actually doing a, developing over time, an actual student survey, that is sort of like a, a quality of how things are going in your school. We've talked on and off for probably 15 years about that, and it's, it's not easy to do, and kids, you have to have professional help of putting it together, because kids will game it, and then you have to put questions in that prevent the gaming, which is what is done with the Student Risk Survey. But that might be an interesting new look that, that we've not taken before, but it'd take time to do that. So, Dr. Brabran, how do you want to wrap this up? We've given a lot of feedback. Is there anything else? I'm not sure that there's really a next step, because we've given so much feedback, but do you feel that you've, yes? Sure.
There were comments about the, I think it was the students, the students shall not feel depressed, enlisted, that, and I just kind of feel like that's backwards. We should have statements of what we're trying to achieve.
Right.
And I think it may not, I'm not comfortable placing the goals on survey outcomes, which may or may not be accurate, but I think we're trying to build the whole student, we're trying to, you know, we need to come up with objectives that we're trying to achieve. We may end up using the survey to try to monitor whether we're addressing those or not, but those aren't particularly goals. I mean, it, it, well, I mean, it's just, you know, mental, achieve mental health, well-being, a sense of well-being, I think we need goals like that. I did glance at the Arlington, everybody's talking about Arlington tonight, and they, and it was more on the positive side. I think underneath, what they're saying is the same thing that we're kind of saying, we don't want kids addicted to drugs or that sort of thing, but the goal is to build a whole person. So I think we need to look more at the objectives of what we're trying to achieve in the student, and work back from there, so I...
Yeah, I think, because I know we use sort of the whole philosophy of assets, which is, which is the part of the Youth Risk Survey, which is a CDC survey, so it's a...
I understand that the survey...
Right, but, but what happens is it ends up looking negative, when in fact, when you look at the tables, you get to a positive outcome, but I...
Right, I mean, children can, they can actively and emotionally engage in the learning environment, all of those are, that's a goal that is certainly hindered if the child is depressed, or whatever, is hindering that process. So I think we need to identify what those goals are more than what the problem is.
Okay, all right, so, Dr. Brabran, what else can we do for you this evening?
I don't think anything. I've gotten plenty of feedback, and this has been helpful, and I think we'll be able to take this and come back with something that's better than what we had before.
Okay.
I don't see a lot, I mean, there's a few tweaks, really a lot of the desired outcomes is keep the same, don't use the new language, some work on measures, we'll take a look at what Arlington had, take some negative into positives, make sure we haven't put too many measures in, which maybe we have, shrink the number of indicators, and make sure that the performance measures we have are the key, key drivers. I also heard maybe there's some measures we can share that are non-strategic, but the board just wants to have a, kind of a pulse on how it goes, and we could create those as sort of a non, a non-strategic, but important standard operating procedures, how's it just going? So let me take a, you know, it's nine o'clock, I've worked 14 hours, I would just tell you, you know, it's good feedback, we'll get better at it, and in some ways, I do want to end and say it this way: This is the most important work. So, I know we have work sessions, and we spend a whole day work session, and we have five or six things, but I, I hope we can find more time, and the evening's not a bad time, but a full-day work session, or a half-day, or the first two hours of three or four work sessions, where we get this right humming, where all of you on board, as tough as this might seem, and, you know, I'd love all of you to just say, amen, this is the greatest thing ever. If we can actually get this pretty tight, we could have some real smooth sailing, or at least I think we could, in partnership, because we're really all on the same page, and we're able to record measures. I know that's what leadership team thinks, that's what I think. What I learned tonight is, we've still got a few more steps to get it to, to that place, let us go back and take the feedback we got, and bring another version to you in the appropriate timeframe that I talked, you know, leadership team's the day after, is tomorrow morning, so I'll be in a better position to answer that afterward.
I would, quick, very quick.
Very quick. The next draft you bring, can we please have it be comprehensive, which is to include the strategy before we're looking at...
I heard that feedback.
...measurements? I, I know, but I, I didn't hear anybody else talking about it, so I, I don't know if you only heard a one voice or not.
Okay. All right, thank you all very much, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.